Okay, good evening, everyone. This is the Rutland Town Select Board meeting for Tuesday, May 7th, 2024. We have a full house. We have all of our select board members here. Kurt Hathaway, Joe DiNardo, Mary Ashcroft, Matt Geddy, and Sharon Russell. So please rise and join me for the pledge. Now, we have two sets of minutes because we didn't have the right configuration of folks here last meeting.
We had, it was the wrong number.
That's right. It was the highway.
The highway amount for the paving we accepted.
Yeah, so let's start with the April 9th regular meeting minutes.
Move to approve as corrected.
And that does have the correct amount. There it is. Okay. Motion's been made to approve the April 9th minutes. Is there a second?
Seconded.
Seconded. additions, deletions. This is the one we have just. We approved the bid from Fuller Sand and Gravel for $188,046.64. So that was the correction. Okay. All in favor, please say aye. Anyone opposed? I'm voting aye. Passing the minutes on. The April 23rd regular select board meeting minutes. You're all here. Is there a motion?
Both took accept.
Motion's been made and seconded to accept. Are there any additions, corrections, deletions? Not all in favor, please say aye. Aye. Anyone opposed? Hey, motion carries. I'm gonna pass that one that way. Another one coming too. Any board member announcements? No. No? Right. Update from the Select Board Chair. Just a reminder for department heads, the circle deadline for this last publication before summer, when we take off the summer. The deadline is May 15th to get articles in. So if you have things that are going to happen in the summer, you need to get it in by May 15th to Janelle, our editor. And please, and then a huge thank you from everyone here at the town of Rutland. For those folks who greened up their roads and streets and neighborhoods. So thank you. Volunteers for a wonderful green up effort. Appreciate it. That's all I have. Are there any questions from the floor or public comments? Anyone in the room? Anyone on the screen? Okay. Not seeing any. Let's move on. Chris Clark, Town Fire Chief. Good evening.
Good evening. How are you?
Wonderful.
Uh, just a couple of things tonight. Our engine four is back. The bodywork was done by Earls this past week. So that's back in the station. Up to date for the year, we have 60 fire calls so far. Sunday, we participated in the Loyalty Day Parade. We had a few members take the engine. And I noticed the new generators at the new building. I just have a quick question about it. The one in Center Rutland, I know, never had a heater installed in it, and it's been an issue for years. They were supposed to put one in last, over the last few months. I'm not sure if they did or not. I haven't got word, but with no heater and it makes the condensation getting the oil, and then when you need it, it doesn't run. So I was just curious if that was added into the new generator in the new building.
Chris, are you talking a block heater for keeping the engine warm during the winter or some different type of heater?
Nope, that engine block heater.
Okay, um, I, well, that'll be a question for JP to find out for us, but we'll make sure it's, it isn't. I'm guessing because that's a diesel generator, that it's going to be set up for winter operation. But we'll make sure we ask JP to check on that.
All right. Thank you. That's all I had.
All right. Any questions or comments, concerns for our fire chief? Thank you to the folks who participated in the Loyalty Day Parade. It's always good.
Soggy day.
I know, it was. Those poor scouts, the picture of the Boy Scouts, they look very soggy. Okay, thank you, chief. Appreciate it.
Thanks.
Carrie Clark, Town Clerk and Treasurer.
When she mentioned your name, I think in Friday.
Correct.
Good evening. All right. So I heard you earlier talking about the seniors.
Yes.
Um, I have had a couple of people come in and ask me if I know anything about if the seniors are going to get together again. So I said I would mention it first thing on my report.
Okay, thank you.
So do we know?
No, we don't. We had, yeah, we, you're right. We had a discussion just briefly. The president, who was very active and was coordinating a lot of things, was, you know, stepped down. There is no president who has stepped up. The vice president or vice chair, whatever it is. Well, thank you, because I was worried that I was still it, and it's, they always meet on a day I can't make it. Marty's the treasurer. So question of, I'm to put all of the information, including emails, send it to Mike Rowe, and he will try and, you know, see if anyone's interested. But we also need to look within the group to see whether anyone might be interested. Would you be interested in taking it over?
Because I can't make all meetings because of being in different places.
Yeah.
On that meeting day. The secretary at the time wasn't interested. She just became secretary, so she didn't want to become president.
Right.
And I asked people there, and, but I didn't ask everybody, but nobody wants to organize the meetings.
Yeah, okay. So that's kind of where we are. So I'm gonna get the email list to Mike, and I think he's at least gonna set up a the cookout, the picnic that we have up at the pool.
You forward your list to me too.
Yes.
Because I don't think I have it currently.
Okay, yeah, okay. To Marty. All right, shall do. So thank you, and if, Carrie, keep passing those along. So we'll see if we can get something going again.
That's good. That'll help, it'll make some people happy.
Yes.
Um, Friday is our last due date for the taxes, like Joey said. This is the one where big penalties happen afterwards. If you don't pay by the next day, which happens to be a weekend, so make sure that you pay by Friday. I'm only staying open until 2:00, just like every other Friday. It is in the paper just as such. So make sure your payment is postmarked or here. We are expecting, we still need about $1.2 million within three days. So there's that.
Is that unusual?
I, I, yeah.
Did you say that's based on postmark arrival?
We accept USPS postmarks.
Because you never know when they're gonna.
It has to be postmarked.
Yeah.
Yeah. But one thing people should be aware of, please, nail that right at the last minute, it may not make it.
Correct. Yep. So taxes are due. We did have the school election on Tuesday. That was the second attempt. Unfortunately, it did not pass. So we are going to have to have another election. I guess the school board met last night. I haven't heard anything about it. So, how's that?
Okay, well, I did send an email out and I copied you, but here's, there were three of us at the school board meeting. We were, we did not warn it as a select board meeting. So we were there to listen. The school board did pass a motion at the end of their meeting. They are going to, of course, revote on the budget. And they asked two things. One is if the the, the select board would approve them mailing out ballots to everyone again. And secondly, if the town would pay for it. As we did before, so before we, I just.
I got your, I got your email.
Okay.
But I've been hearing, I didn't hear anything about how the when they're gonna do it, what the budget looks like, anything. So I'm just going to sit back and watch.
In our budget to do that.
That was, that was, okay, to, to your point first, and then to your point. They haven't set a date. They did want to give more time so they can do some outreach and better education about what, what's in the budget and what's not. The summary that I took from there where there were, there were two changes. One is there was, and neither of them had a negative impact on the school. One was a $35,000 admin reduction because some of the full-time folks had moved to part-time, thus creating a savings and some of the benefits. So $35, $35,000 reduction there. And then there was a tweak in the formula, and I don't remember what exactly the name was for that piece of the formula. But it was what?
The yield.
The yield. It was a a tweak that would benefit the town to the tune of $200,000. So those two things. But there was no motion, and they haven't picked a date as far as I know. So that's where we are. Do we have any sense of how much it costs us to mail out this stuff?
I have everything in front of me.
Wonderful. Thank you.
Sure. It is the last election. This includes every single little tiny bit that you could possibly imagine that went into it. It was $9,287.99.
And what did it cost for the mailing, to mail the ballots out? Or do you have that, Carrie?
It's, that's included in that cost. I have postage, I have the workers, I have the envelopes. I have my time, I have my mileage, I have the food that we've provided, and the warnings in the Herald.
So that, other than the warnings, is that number just for the mailing, or is that also including Election Day workers?
Including Election Day workers.
So what would be really useful is to know just how much the mailing part of it costs.
It's right here. You can take a look at it. Um, so I just also want to put it out there that there, Susan and I are taking time in our office, and we are, deserved our time, and I am not gonna work around an election with our time. So whatever the school picks, I guess other people are gonna have to take care of it because we're taking our time.
So will you make sure that when the school contacts you, they know which days you're, you're gonna be short-staffed over there?
I can do that, but it's gonna be pretty much a lot of time.
Sounds like we shouldn't do it then. I mean, we can't tell them that we can get it out. And it costs a lot of money. I mean, I don't know where the money's coming from, but, and we don't know how many times we're gonna do this.
And.
If we can't tell them that we're gonna do it, certainly doesn't make sense to spend the money.
But here's the other thing too. You're gonna run an election, and myself or both of us aren't gonna be around even in person at, you know, certain times. So they're gonna have to have discussions and let me know. But I'm just gonna kind of sit back because the last time I got into it, I guess they didn't really like that. So, I mean, it was a lot boring.
All we're trying to do is follow the statute. That's all we're trying to do.
Trying to follow the statute.
Hey.
Which is what we've told them. We've educated them on what the process is too, so that they are aware of what the requirements are.
Okay, so they want to revote it. We have, the only question we have, well, two, and I told them this. Whether we agree to allow them to mail out ballots. We can't stop them from having another election.
No, I'm not saying that.
That's off, that's off the table. But we can say whether we agree whether the ballots will be mailed out again, and whether the town, town side will pay the cost of it. So the question, two questions for us. And the question on, do we still have enough money from the position that wasn't filled in your office to pay for another election?
Yes, but here's the thing. The people need to know that from an accounting standpoint, we're not putting it toward that line. We'll use the offset in the end, but it's not going to reflect in that line because that is not true to our taxpayers. So there's $30,000 left after that in that line.
Okay.
But that's how it's going to reflect in the budget.
As of now, you mean?
We're, we're gonna overspend the line that covers that, which is the best way to do it because it shows a clear cost for, for that expense.
Absolutely.
My only concern about not mailing out the ballots is, is that the turnout will be, that will be terrible. You know, I, I think you and I talked after the election, and I think it was like, well, I think we talked Friday.
Yeah.
When we had our meeting here, and more folks voted for the special election than voted in the marginal.
That's true.
You know, because we held the ballots up. So I'm in favor of doing that again. When you're talking a nine, $10 million budget, we need to have as many people. I know there's a cost and a time factor involved in getting that stuff together and getting it mailed out. So those are issues. I think that if that's going to be the thing, the town will pay the cost, and I don't have a problem with that. But I think the school board needs to get some folks in here to put that stuff together and help get those mailings out and get that done. I, I think that's a fair, if we're willing to cover the cost of doing it, then they should be able to cover the personnel to make it happen. I think, I mean, you, you did all that the last time, right?
But you're safe.
Absolutely.
Right.
And I had people come in here, and from the BCA, we stuffed, took them two days. But we got it out.
Do, are there any not sure what rules as to who can do the stuff, the ballots. Does, does the BCA have to be involved or, or not?
I don't know. No, I don't know.
I would like to think the BCA would at least have to oversee it.
Some, you know, you might have to have some BCA members. I mean, you're doing a
You gotta make sure everybody gets a ballot.
Every, right. So, so there's gotta be some accountability, but I would just think that, that, you know, if we pay the tab for doing it, which I think we should, but the school needs to provide the personnel to do the work with BCA oversight.
Yeah.
Does that sound?
All right.
Hey, I'm gonna listen to you guys.
What, does that work? You know, that'll cut down on, you know, your workload. To some.
Joey, you know how I feel.
Yeah, I know, but, but we have to get those done, and, and either way, it's, it's just, it's a function that has to be done, and we can't neglect it, and we can't
No.
minimize it. So.
Okay, my one question is the school board is asking us to pay for that again.
Yes.
Are they willing to put any money towards that?
They didn't say anything in this meeting. It was a straight vote to request us.
I mean, I agree with Joey that it should be done. But if they've got money that can support it, I think they should be part of that.
I mean, I think they're asking for us to spend the money. So we could say, no, you have to spend the money, and then they can decide whether they're going to, but I don't think they.
Well, that's not my question. My question is, can they afford to, at least, part of it?
I don't, I don't think so, but.
The thing with it is, Sharon, I mean, I know what you're saying, and to me, it doesn't make a difference because I pay, we all pay school taxes, and we all pay municipal taxes. So it's just one pocket or the other. You know, it's gonna cost us, whether it comes out of a municipal budget or a school budget, it's gonna cost the taxpayers the same. It's, it's not like if we take it out of the school budget, well, then the town doesn't pay for it. What we do pay for, we're paying taxes. So I'm not concerned about that as much as I just don't think that we should, you know, Carrie's office, or whatever, or, or the BCA should handle the whole workload. I mean, if they want to get this done, and, and like I say, you need the most people out there to vote on this, you know, to get people out there. This is the best way. And, and they need to, to put the staff up. We need those people in here, get it done in one day.
I'm not concerned about the money. I'm concerned about, we aren't going to be in that office as much as they think we're going to be in that office because we've waited, and fiscal year's almost over, so.
And we'll have to work around that.
When we did mail-in ballots before, I don't know if this was helpful, but it, it's a possibility. When the ballots came back in, you had a couple of BCA members who would help put them in alphabetical order and do some checking. Was that at all useful? Could we reinstate that?
There's so much going on in that office that I, I guess a pair of hands wouldn't hurt, but.
All right. I'm just trying to, I'm, I'm trying to figure this out here.
I think it is for you guys and the select or the school board to figure out because there's just a lot of other stuff that I'm trying to juggle.
Yep.
And no luck hiring anybody.
Well, I can't do that, Matt.
I'm like, well, you would, you'd only have.
I'm putting it out for next fiscal year. There's no doubt about it.
Realistically, if you found somebody, you'd have them for about a month.
Yeah.
Yeah, right.
Right.
Which, you know, by the time you go through the process and
Yep.
warn it, whatever. So if you start now with any luck, you'll get somebody by the 1st of July.
Okay, well, the school board has asked, and, and they voted to ask us, A, for permission to mail out the ballots again, and B, for the town to pick up the cost. So is there any motion?
I'll move that we allow the ballots to be mailed out, and we cover the cost with the condition, the school board provides necessary personnel to do the ballot, you know, stuffing and do that. This is, they've gotta contribute something, and if they don't have the money, or the money is not the issue. It's not to me. It's, it's taken an interest in what needs to be done here.
Okay, so that's the motion. Is there a second?
Second.
Motion's made and seconded. Discussion.
So who's gonna actually be in charge of getting it done?
I still think it has to be under the, the town clerk because it's an election of the town.
So Carrie will have to organize when this is done, and who, you know, if we need BCA people here, which I do believe we'll need to, that they're there. You know, there's gonna take some organization. It just doesn't mean that Carrie herself has to be in this room doing it. She can work in her office or if you're not here. Either way, it'll get done with the people here. But that's, you know, and I, our BCA is, you know, I mean, the five of us are on the BCA.
Right.
So
Right.
we can all be here helping. That should, you know, and, and it may require that.
Yeah.
For, for additional, but like I said, the board needs to contribute to this project if they want this budget to pass, or at least get the vote ballots out there and make it as smooth as possible. That's, and it's the only way you're gonna get a legitimate consensus of the town.
Well, consensus has got nothing to do with it. I mean, even with the mail-in ballots, we still only had about a third of our registered voters actually bothered to vote.
Yeah.
No, 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 no. Forty-seven percent, way higher, way higher.
You would have had 400 show up to the special.
Yeah.
March election was how many? 20%?
Yeah.
Twenty, thirty?
Not, yeah.
More, more people show up to a March election than a special election.
Yeah, special election, you know, it's the same when we did the fire station, the revoked the amount for the fire station.
Exactly.
Based on, I think we had 12, what, was 1,200 people voted?
Uh, 1350.
Yeah. And so it's just.
Numbers are right here too, if you want to look at them.
Okay.
Yeah, people just don't want to be bothered to get in their car.
I'm trying to remember what the last special election we did that didn't get mailed out.
They had a school election, I think. So with all of this extra stuff, I think I should probably request a personnel meeting. Just because, you know, I'm taking a lot on.
Okay.
Whenever we can schedule one.
Let us vote on this motion first because we do have a motion on the floor. And personnel, as you know, is meeting very frequently to work on the personnel manual, so you can, uh, so any further discussion on the school board's request to mail out ballots and have the town pay for it? And our kind of request that they, with the condition, if we approve it, with the condition that they assist with the stuffing of the envelopes and prepping the mail. Okay, all in favor of the motion, please say aye.
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 Aye. Sharon, are you aye?
I said aye.
Okay. Motion carries. No one opposed? Okay.
My math doesn't work the same on that, but I may not.
All right, so Personnel Committee meeting. And well, Matt and I will compare notes with you and see when we can do that. We also need a fin, yes, we also need a finance meeting. So, and I know that we were kind of waiting until you had a.
And a scholarship.
Yeah, no. The Finance Committee, you were waiting on meeting with Andrew, and that needs to happen first. So do you want to have separate Finance and Personnel Committee meetings? Okay. Already. I'll check with Matt. I'll check with you, and we'll see what we can set up.
Okay.
And I'm assuming you don't want it before taxes are due?
Let's do it after.
Okay. Thank you, Carrie. Oh, wait, 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 wait. There was one other thing, and that is appointment of authorized representative for the Vermont Municipal Bond Bank. It requires that we, we authorize someone to be our official for the purposes of dealing with the bonds and the loan that we're getting from the Municipal Bond Bank. Carrie's got the form filled out with her name as clerk treasurer and her signature, so we should, if the Select Board approves, we should authorize her to act on our, the town's behalf for this bond, and authorize me to sign on behalf of the board. Is there a motion? Motion's made and
Yep.
seconded. Right, discussion? Did I get that right? That's what it's for.
Okay, there's five payments right there, and.
Yes, yes. Okay. If there's no discussion, all in favor of the motion, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Anyone opposed? Okay.
Carrie, have we exhausted all of the funds that we've set aside for the building?
I think we have a little bit of capital improvements left, but Andrew and I need to talk about that on Thursday. The ARPA is gone on, and so we're back, we're now into the bond. And this is 375,000 of the bond.
Yeah, okay. All right. It was a good timing getting that done when you did. Did a good job.
Thanks, Joe.
You get a good, you know, I mean, it's, we knew that we were gonna need it, and we ran out just, well, so it's a good job.
Okay, so that goes in. Do you want it? Do you want this, or do you want me to put it in the folder? Okay. Well, you can put it on top. Thank you. All right. Thank you, Carrie.
I'm gonna hit you right with that one.
Mike Delahanty is not Edumis, Town Police Chief.
Hello?
Hello? So as you go, we're calls for service for the month. Hundred fifty-two calls for service, we had seventeen traffic stops. We're busy. Any questions on that stuff?
Just so glad to see that our constable is. Out there patrolling our roads.
Yeah.
He is.
Cars on Grove Street, um, you know, like. Well, some at fifty-one, fifty-two, one at sixty-five. It's in with the um construction on Route Seven.
We got a call yesterday from a resident on North grocery. Pulled out the speed car, out here charging up and probably title set up tomorrow.
Well, you know. It it's a good thing, the speed car um in conjunction with somebody downstream from it after they go by. They will be stopping every car, cuz I've listened to this, we, you guys set it up in the yard there one time. And they go by and you can hear them, they slow down and when by the time they get to my mobile home, they just jump on it and I told JP. You just need to be on the flats by Galopos and you're gonna have a few. Anyway, but I really appreciate him being out there and anything you guys can do to. On all the roads in town.
And then Lynn got the stats for the month uh done up for us, so we had a total of a hundred and sixty-nine cases. And a hundred and twenty-one of those were generated from the south end. Or spent seventy-two percent of our time down there. You look at the comparison for the south and above it for from all the other years, the only month that were down less than. Is the two thousand twenty-three March, we had a hundred and thirty, this year we had a hundred and fourteen, but the rest of them. Were all on an increase at this point in time. I know, we're spending a lot of time at the Cortina at this point in time.
Any sign of? Fewer folks living there?
I did get some information today that the uh Fire Marshal. I think the state Fire Marshal was there and told them they didn't get some items fixed, they could no longer take any new vouchers, so. They're kinda like on a freeze until they get a reputable company to come fix. The issues that have been on their list since last year, almost a year. They're looking at fines. At this point in time, I am, and that's. I got it from a pretty good source, not from the state of Vermont, for sure, so.
Do you wanna hear some more or do you wanna wait till the highway report? Cuz Kurt and I have some more for you.
Well.
It it's with the cost to the town from Cortina, it's not to do with law enforcement, but it's an additional cost that nobody even thought of.
Yeah, we, well, I will toss in that there was a raw sewage leak.
This is what we're talking, this is.
Because I was the one who's.
Yeah, you you stumbled on it, but it sounded like it, um, yeah, so I might just now, I've opened a can of worms, I'll just keep going, so. Um, once this started, I think they got someone down here to work on it. Dave and his crew got involved and they went down and identified manholes. Um, manholes are not supposed to be full and they were pulling covers and they're full right to the top. Um, A-one was down there last Thursday, Friday or Friday, sometime the end of the week. Full day pumping, cleaning, doing stuff, and what they're finding is. Anything from kids' toys to bed sheets. And stuff in the sewer, so this is an enormous cost. Man, enormous, but a high cost to the town for something we didn't even think about. Um, the other issue that came up with this is. When the sewer line was run, it would be my understanding, it was twelve inch out of the city, then when they extended it, they did ten inch. And then when they extended it again, the next time they did twelve, so we got a twelve going into a ten, which doesn't work. And there's about sixteen hundred feet of sewer line down there that's gonna have to be replaced at some point to meet the demand. Um, Holiday Inn setup was never designed to be.
Cortina.
Or Cortina, excuse me, when it when it was Holiday Inn, and now it is Cortina, was never. It's a motel owner's dream to be fully occupied twenty-four, seven, thirty days, you know. And now it is, and the system down there is just not gonna handle it, and then with the stuff that's getting put into there. It's it's plugged up in the manual, so there's gonna be an ongoing expense to the town there that we never even thought about.
What are we paying? Are we paying for?
I'm assuming we're paying A-one to go down there and clean that. You know, everything because stuff has gone downstream.
Well.
They'll, they've been all the way from Rand, I think the the transition from ten to twelve is at the end of Ranbury or somewhere around Ranbury. So you got sixteen hundred feet going south, that's ten inch, and and there was, um. You know, and this all started with the folks from the um Kai Wash. Um, and you know, we have some stuff, you know, they wanted to get out of that, so we got stuff done, they they've had people in looking. And then you found this and then JP got involved and and it's gone downhill since. But but it's a, it's just a, it's not something you would anticipate. Um, and these folks, just it's a toilet and we'll just flush everything down it and it doesn't work. And then when the water goes, the solids are left behind and then they start plugging things up and. I mean, it was exciting, talk, discussion with Dave.
I bet it was.
Yeah, so there's something out there.
I was at a conversation with uh members of DCF, the workers, if you will. They weren't anticipating all the problems uh. That are generated at that hotel also, I spent. Four times I went down there last, this last month to deal with one particular family. And then last Thursday, I think it was Thursday, we spent two and a half hours over my. Seven thirty, eight o'clock when I got done, we had pulled two children from uh a family down there. Wouldn't listen to reason, if you will, so I had myself, Deputy Chief Washburn. Initially two troopers, then we had to get two more troopers because uh the numbers didn't add up of, there was only six of us and there was lots of them.
Yeah.
And uh fortunately, they were, there is some nice people down there who uh. Helped out tremendously cuz they lived down there and know the people, so it worked out okay. Yeah, we're spending a lot of time down there in the thought that uh. I know that uh there's a worry in in our town next to ours about opening another one of these places and. I know the people in DCF are like, they're like, no, no, and the trooper's like, no, no, we don't want this, this is there. But they won't, they can't say that, but I can, so I can.
Now, just, I think we're set to have DCF and Agency of Human Services reps in at our next Select Board meeting. Along with Drew from the Cortina, Drew Kumar, yeah, so you'll be here, hopefully?
Will, I'll be here.
I think so, yeah.
I just, there's a, was a insurance gentleman at the uh Cortina today, I happened to be there, over here, a conversation, they were talking about it. The roof they just put on last year maybe will last five years because. They use substandard help from everywhere. Or something that should last twenty years, maybe it'll last five years, I mean.
Well, I understood that they tried to do their own plumbing and electric on them themselves without.
That, this is, they just do not, I don't understand why. Hire a good company that stands by their work rather than this shoddy stuff that they're trying to get done, they're just like. What is the end game? Is it just to get as much money as can and just let it crash and burn around them and be, okay, we've made several million, we're done. Let's get out of here.
This week.
What's what's that?
I said that was this week.
Yeah. I I don't know what their plan is, but.
Um, we did have a police committee meeting prior to this meeting and we do have a proposal for the board, Matt.
No minutes, right?
No, cuz it was right before this meeting.
Alright, so last meeting, I think it was JP brought up the. Well, he sent us an email, I guess, as well, um, about. Um, acquiring uh.
SPR.
Is that what it is?
Short barrel rifle.
Yeah, acquiring a rifle that um right now Ted is using. And um. This is a weapon that is registered to the town, but Ted paid for. Uh, and JP would like to have one for. If you ever needed one. Um, having just gone to training and and feeling like having a handgun was inadequate for the training, for the situation they were training for. Um, so the proposal, um, Teddy's got another. Weapon of his own that he can use, so uh the proposal is to to use. Effective July one in the new fiscal year when there's money, JP's equipment fund. To pay Teddy fifteen hundred dollars. For that item, which is a lot less than he paid for it. And then the, well, it is registered to the town, it will remain a town-owned item, but it would be assigned to JP.
It's pretty much.
Second.
So the, yeah, motion is to spend the fifteen hundred dollars in the new, in the new fiscal year.
I guess that's.
Did you second it, Joey?
I will, yes, I do, yeah, that's fine.
Motion's made in seconded discussion. If not, all in favor, please say aye. Aye, anyone opposed?
It's unanimous.
The other, the other thing I have is uh. One of my officer Plakis, let's take, I was mentioning, he's taken on himself to uh. Hold accountable the people on the sex offender uh list that are out of bounds or non-compliant. He spends anywhere from, you know, ten, fifteen, twenty hours a week, sometimes depends on how busy he is. But there's a, there's a possibility of a grant position open up on a part-time basis that could refund the town of Roland Ford. Officer Plakis's services, so just, we, I wanna hear more about it, I'll keep the police committee informed and we'll go from there, so.
We did take a look at as well, um, speaking of grant funding, the CFAC position. And just early number crunching, if we had a grant, three-year grant, eighty thousand dollars per year. Just family health insurance plan alone would be thirty thousand of that, leaving only fifty thousand left. To pay the officer, which is not where we were. So it is looking like this is not with, the the numbers aren't good, but we're asking Ed to go. We're not saying no, we're asking Ed to go back and see whether CFAC would make do with a maybe thirty-hour position. Or a fewer hours um per week. And then. Maybe we could hire a part-time person to fill that position and not have bump up against. The eighty, because I think it's eighty thousand each year and of course, every year salary and benefits costs go up to the town, so. If we didn't bump into it the first year, we probably would the second or third year.
So the grant is for sixty a year?
Eighty.
Eighty?
Yeah, there's two, there's like three parts of it, but it.
So if we basically would be what you did when you were with the city, and so. Hum, so they would cover the cost of the officer, but it doesn't cover everything.
Doesn't cover the insurance, I mean, you take thirty thousand out of that. What they're actually giving us is fifty thousand.
Right.
So, and that doesn't, that doesn't cover it.
Ed's point is, he might be able to find the right person who's semi-retired and would, and maybe covered under another health insurance plan. So may, and maybe it wouldn't be a family plan or, so, I mean, there, we're not at the know yet.
So what you're saying is that the grant is for eighty thousand, but thirty of it's already.
If we have, if we have to go for a family plan, yeah.
Right, that thirty of it's already earmarked, so you only got fifty to pay the officer.
But if you get somebody who's semi-retired, who's already got health insurance from another agency or whatever, for the rest of their life or whatever, till they turn sixty-five, well then. It would be, we could do it then, I think we could do it.
Yeah, I'm looking at the fact that you could get a. Police officer in town that would work some overtime hours or whatever, and it might cost us ten grand a year. Still.
Yeah.
You'd, I mean, if if we took and put a. Full-time person in there, took the eighty thousand grant. They're gonna get thirty toward benefits and fifty toward their salary, and if we had to come up with another ten or fifteen, basically, we're getting a full-time officer. Granted, their forty-hour week is with CFAC, but they're still available overtime if they, you know, to us, so.
And and that's, that's the attractive part of it too.
Yeah, so I'm not.
If.
Oppose if it did cost us.
If CFAC would do thirty or thirty-two hours and still pay us the same amount, then we at least have a police officer a day a week.
Yeah.
To offset that.
Depending on you get the right person, they might wanna work some weekends or or some time.
In the plaza.
Or wherever, I mean, if they wanna go down there and patrol around like you guys do, do the extra patrols, we have plenty of funds to pay these people if they wanna work the hours and. And if, yeah, I guess if they got away with it, well, do what you can, yeah.
Yeah, so we're.
It's work in progress, so thanks for not saying no, so figured out.
Yeah, it's not a no.
I mean, you're having a hard time filling the position we gave you permission to fill.
Yeah. Well, that's also a.
Yeah.
Work in progress, I guess.
Work in progress.
You know, I'm I'm saying, it's, it's not like there's a whole raft of qualified police officers waiting somewhere that wanna come to work.
I think Killington's hiring, well, hires three more.
They're hiring three in the city, there was an article, they're bumping up, you know, they're they're coming up to quota there, which is good for them, but.
You know, in in, it's a tough occupation right now.
Well, it's a tough occupation, and it's tough on him. When ninety percent of his staff is south of the city.
Well, yeah, but the public just doesn't support PD like they should.
I agree.
It's not the, they don't, it's not the environment that it should be for what they do.
No. No, and and most.
The bad guys.
No, you, most police officers, if you ask them, would you do it again? And they said, no. Every single one that I asked them.
I will, I will say that uh this, I shared with the police committee, we had Officer Plakis work the plaza here last week and uh. Nothing was going on, so. Being one not to sit around and do nothing and get paid for it, he went out on Route Seven, Route Four, see if he could drum up some trouble out there with him and his dog. And he didn't know where and leave and a couple saw him leave. Went in the store, one at one end of the aisles, just would systematically go down the aisles, they saw this on camera, looking for the right victim to go after. Found her. One of the females falls down, pretends she hurts herself, old, older, older woman goes to help her. Older man steals her backpack and her purse and. Took it from her and she turns around, figures out what's going on, Jimmy got, went back there. Another civilian was there, got a plate number, city police stopped the car, took some time for him to put it all together cuz he, they held on the two people. And charged him with theft from a person, which is a felony, the next day the judge says, nope, the the backpack or whatever she had wasn't. She didn't have a hold of it, so it's not theft from a person, so it's petty larceny misdemeanor, you get to go, you get to leave now, so. Yep, but he got all the money back, they never had a chance to spend, they stole a little over two hundred dollars in cash from her, she had. She was going for surgery the next day and uh.
Something good came of it.
And Officer Plakis uh took it by himself, he didn't go home till two or three in the morning, we got done with the paperwork. He gets here the next day finishing things up, I'm just telling you, yeah. It was a good case, good police work, everything went right, the good, thanks for the city for all their helpers, some really high-speed guys there at night that work, so. Yeah.
Well, please convey our thanks.
Yeah, and it's all because of the uh work of the board with that two fifty and all itself so that we could uh, we're able to be down there, so, thank you. That's all I have.
Thanks.
Okay, thank you, anything else for Chief? Alright. Uh, JP was in earlier, um, sat in on part of the police committee meeting, but is not available. Now, and I don't see him up on the screen, and he said he didn't have anything to report anyway.
Yeah, he's working, there's a little bit going on with the um summary, we're still working on the. Where he is, and I've been helping with additional parking and some stuff out back, so he's been talking with the MS, he's been talking with Fabian. Um, there there's some stuff, more to come on that, um. Just, just stuff that we can do in a different order, a different timeframe, so.
Yeah, and I I seen here, we changed to a different style window, which saved us seventeen thousand dollars.
Yeah.
Looks a bit.
Yeah.
Good.
Same brand, probably different line of window, looks of it.
The um, the generator, as Chris Clark said, is there. The, um, the generator, as Chris Clark said, is there. Yeah, we're going to be able to sell power next when power goes up. He'll power a whole block.
Yep, yep.
Um, Green Mountain Power has set the poles, it changed its reface out, uh. Looking, they're working inside, you know, you drive by and it doesn't look like anything's going on. And there was some glitch with the siding. And, and I didn't quite understand it when I was, when I attended one of the meetings for JP, but that's why the siding isn't on, but they're, they're getting stuff done inside, so. Anyway.
All right, thanks, Joe. Um, and thanks for that catch, too. Kurt, on the window thing. Yeah, I didn't notice that.
Yeah, it was in there.
Oh, good, good, good. Okay, Barbara Noise Pulling, Town Planning Commission Chair, good evening.
Good evening. Yeah, um, do you mind going back to Cortina for just a minute? I have a question.
Okay.
About it, um, what happened to the, um, looking into the Act two fifty permit and possible violations there? Well, where does that stand? I mean, it just seems like things are piling up. All the time and that there may be more and more violations at play here.
Um, we, what, what we refer to the settlement fund, which, uh, compels the. Cortina to be making monthly payments to us is a settlement of the Act two fifty. Um, almost litigation that was going on, on the issue of the additional strain on town services due to the change. In use and whether a permit was needed. Now, where it stands is. Yes, they are operating in a manner that is not consistent with the existing Act two fifty permit because it was for a motel. And, um, longer-term housing and homeless housing is not the same thing. Um, but it would, we would have to go in and reopen on these other issues as well. If it rose to a level, we haven't, we haven't passed them. I think, I think we did make town council aware of the, the surge thing, but now we have more information. On the actual cost, so, um, it sounds like it might be worth another conversation with town council. Um, we frankly keep expecting that the voucher program will end, and of course it doesn't, it just keeps getting extended. And one of the reasons we're inviting in the folks, both from the Cortina and from the state, is to find out. You know, longer range, what the plans are. Um, so that's a very long answer that probably isn't an answer, but that's kind of where we are.
Okay, yeah, thank, thank you. And, and it's, you know, it seems like the, the ownership. Regardless of what happens to the voucher program, the, the ownership may not be going anywhere anytime soon. So, uh, not sure the.
Fire marshal place, they might be.
Yeah, I mean, there, there could be, you know, fire marshals actions after, there could be State of Vermont Health Department. Actions after the, the surge, um, outflows. Um, so there are other now state agencies that are watching in addition to DCF with the, the folks that are down there. And I will say too, that JP did pass us a draft ordinance that would be basically a health ordinance. And enable the town to take over enforcement. If we passed an ordinance, then we would, um, then reauthorize our. Health officer to enforce state law down there and give us a little more oomph locally. Um, and we did pass the draft ordinance up to town attorney to take a look at. So, you know, that we're, we're proceeding on several fronts, not all of them necessarily, just the Act two fifty-one, but. That's kind of where we are. So join us in two weeks because we expect that, um, the Cortina discussion will take some time at our select board meeting.
Okay, thank you, thank you for the update. Um. Otherwise, the planning commission's not doing too much, um. We are keeping an eye on a couple very substantive, uh, pieces of legislation. Um, that will have some implications for Rutland Town. One is S two thirteen, and that's the, uh, wetlands and river corridors. Um, bill, and that would essentially, uh, mandate river corridors, um, throughout the state. Um, there would be a two-year, um, education and outreach, um, period for that. For the public to, to weigh in, um, if it's passed, um, before the rulemaking starts. So, um, we're, we're keeping an eye on that because we were looking at river corridors. Um, and it is probably S two thirteen is probably going to pass, so we may not be doing much on river corridors for the time being. Uh, the, the other big piece of legislation is H six eighty-seven, and that's the Act two fifty reform. And that will have among a lot of things, I mean, there's housing in there. Um, it will have some implications for towns without zoning. And, uh, where, where they can develop. If they don't have zoning, there'll be, um, this, uh, collection of, of tiers or zones. That would, uh, be different for different kinds of development and depending on whether you have zoning. So both of those are, uh, both of those bills are huge, um, and they look like they will pass and I'm. Not quite sure if they're veto-proof, but they may be. So the planning commission is looking at both of those.
And so the wet, the wetlands and river corridors bill are, are, or either of them for that matter, is there any money attached to it that might assist the town to? You know, do any additional regulation that we need to?
Well, um, I don't know. I didn't really notice that in the legislation. Um, it's more or less, um, a mapping. It's like, it's like the, the, the floodplain. Um, but in, instead of just the floodplain, there'd be the floodplain and river corridors. And, um, and, you know, restrictions on what can go in those areas.
Right.
So, uh, not a real easy compensation type situation.
No, but it's extra work for the planning commissioner or a, a contract with the regional commission to, you know.
And, and that may be why they have a two-year, um, you know, public comment period with municipalities on that one.
All right, questions for Barbara, planning commission chair. Okay, thank you very much. Thanks for keeping an eye on the legislation, too.
Thank you.
All right, Mike Rowe, Town Rec Director. Good evening.
Good evening. Uh, not much, um, just everything's going well at the parks, getting everything open, baseball seating is open. We just, I was just there, so that's going well. Uh, the pool is going to be power washed probably this weekend or next weekend. And then we fill and we turn it on and we hope to open the first weekend in June. Um, Bill has put up the pool, um, itinerary for the summer. So if you just go to the website. It tells you when our signups are, uh, what the cost is and what our hours of operation are. Um, our staff has been essentially hired for the summer, so next meeting, whenever you would like, I can give you a list of. Who our staff will be for the upcoming season. Um. Mowing and getting things going is basically where we're at. So we're in a rhythm for the summer, all the water's on. And I think we're out of the spring freeze, so I think we're okay, Joe. What do you think? We got one more in it or what?
He said the words.
I, I did say the word. Now that all the water's on, something will go. Other than that, I, I don't have much, other than we had a, a quick meeting beforehand, um, and Marty is here, so Marty, you're part of the conversation. So.
Rutland Town seniors, um, and, and Carrie mentioned it as well, we're getting some feedback, the seniors are wondering. When is the group going to be reactivated? And we don't have a president, um, we don't have a vice president. We don't, we do have a, a treasurer and he's sitting here and the secretary, I think, was brand new, so. Um. Yeah, so I'm going to get the last list that I had to Mike and Mike's, um. Going to at least try and set up a picnic as we have had up at the park, but it, you know, we are looking at seniors who are interested and maybe taking over some leadership. Great community involvement, you know, wonderful contribution if you would be willing to. Um, help us out with the Rutland Town seniors and you can have a title. We will call you president or chair, whichever sounds better.
Maybe even a T-shirt.
We could do.
We could do T-shirts.
We could do.
We could do T-shirts, yeah.
And I think maybe a winter cap or something, we could do stuff.
We could swag it up for him.
Okay.
We could do that.
So anyone interested in doing good, plus getting.
Say Rutland Town Senior.
Bumper sticker. Whatever you want on it. We can do, we're, we're, you know, get a hat says, you know, senioritis, whatever, we can do whatever we want. We can put anything on it.
Opportunity knocks.
I'm getting the rolling eyes from partner in crime over here, sounding like in the terminology.
Right.
Not after the names you called me.
I wasn't calling you any names.
Oh, my God.
Out of love. They were, they were out of love. They were not out of anything, but.
And he didn't even know what he was calling me, which was worse.
I know, that's true.
Um, quickly, are there any more questions for our town rec director? Um, that's up to you folks. This is the.
That's up to you, yeah. Um, go ahead, Matt, if you want.
We had some discussion about a spray. This came up in a prior meeting. Uh, Bill's been doing research. He found an item. Which is within the amount, I think you originally contemplated, maybe I could be wrong, but.
Yes.
Price tag on here is four thousand, six hundred and seventy-five dollars and ninety-nine cents for trailer mounted, spray, boom, tank, et cetera. Uh. So I think, it's a nice proposal or request, I guess, was to. Uh, purchase this out of the capital improvement fund. And, uh, which, you know, I think makes sense conceptually, but I don't know. Um, I guess there's a question for Carrie. We need to have, cover this in, um. Finance meeting as to what the, I don't know what the balance now is in the capital improvement fund. I know we swept a lot out of that for. The emergency services building, so don't know where that is.
So is that a hold for the time being on that?
How good, long is the price good for?
Yeah.
I don't know about that. Bill, we didn't check on late, no, we didn't.
That's the direction you want to go, Mike. I know you've had some conversations.
It, it seems the most economical and the most versatile.
Gives you an opportunity to do different things at different times.
Exactly, um, now that we're, you know, in the situation that we're in, and it just makes sense that. If we're able to do that, great. I mean, I get it if it's not, I just want to be more proactive and. And try to keep what we have and maintain it and get it better.
We had a conversation as well about being environmentally conscious with what we use and how often we use it and that kind of thing, but if we had it, then. We have options. Right now, we, we've had one spraying, the spring. Um, you know, done by a contractor now. And so far, that's all we planned to do. We only did one last year.
We've only done one. I mean, it's six, it's the cost of that sprayer per visit. It's not that the chemicals is tough, we could plan accordingly for budgeting purposes. And we have people on staff if we wanted to take on, you know, maintaining what we have rather than it turning back into a sandpit. Um, which we don't really want it to do.
I think you've had conversation with Chris about different things for spraying and some ideas, because, you know.
He highly recommended that.
Yeah, you know, well, I, I know that when he was working for trees, he did a lot of spraying for them, so he has some, um, ideas with that and, um, spraying license, so. I guess we have to, I mean, if we're going to do, I, I don't have a problem with using the capital improvement funds. I mean, we did do that to buy a couple of trucks for highway. Because that was the same way to go. We, we just timing right now, um, you won't know for a while what's there.
Just be wary of how much you're going to allocate out of that right now.
Yeah, right. Do you have any idea what the unallocated balance is at this point?
It's about over, we're supposed to sweep over from last audit, four hundred, I think, but of that, I'm not sure what you earmarked.
Okay.
Because I don't think, I don't think we would be so. Um, would have been, I can't think of the word, is to spend money we didn't have when we allocated funds. I, I don't think we. Yeah, I don't think we, we allocated anything we didn't have. We didn't do anything in anticipation to have it, Mike, that's.
Yeah, I, I think that's correct.
You know.
Carrie, when, when, is so, is, and does Andrew have homework now that he's to respond to, to give you that information? Or you, do you have another meeting with him scheduled or? It's coming Thursday and then you'll, they'll have that answer. So if we schedule a finance meeting next week, then we should be able to get to a number.
Okay.
Well, I have a question. It cost us five thousand to have it sprayed. Am I correct?
Correct, both parks, yes, just, just the ball fields.
Okay, and this thing is four thousand?
Around there, it's under five.
Okay, so isn't that kind of a no-brainer?
Right, is this where the fun, it's not that, I, I think the conversation is how we're going to pay for it and when.
Well, you're going to have to pay to spray.
We already did.
Already did. And that, and that was budgeted for, so what Michael will have to do in the future in his budget, he's going, you know, that spray line. I'm guessing you have a line in there for spraying.
We will start.
You'll have to buy chemicals now, but you are not going to be paying, so you're just going to be paying for the equipment and then the chemicals, which aren't that really, some are, but some aren't that bad.
Depending on which way we go, correct.
Right, and, and so that'll be a new thing, you know, that chemical line you have now is just for pool stuff.
Yeah, we will add to that.
Exactly, right, it'll just be there. Um, where do you, do you budget, I didn't look at you, I don't remember the line, but in your budget, do you have a line in there? For the spray and that was done?
No, that came out of depreciation because of the fact that it was, we were redoing the field because it had gotten.
Okay.
Got destroyed. So we're moving, being proactive and moving.
Now we're going to actually start budgeting money and we'll get this. So I don't, I think we'll probably will use a capital improvement fund, but we can't. Spend those dollars until Carrie tells us we got the dollars to spend because that don't work the other way.
And, and I'm perfectly fine with that. Once every, once the numbers are fine, as long as you're on board and approve that.
Yeah.
That we can use that if, if there's monies there that are appropriate, then that's all I'm asking. So it doesn't have to be right away, but I, I don't want to just keep pushing it down the road. That's, that's my only thing, so.
After, we should reach out to VLCT as well, make sure they're going to be okay with town employees spraying.
That might be something to do before we do spend the money.
Yeah, they probably will have to take some classes.
We have, we do have one.
I know there's a lot of weird sticky stuff when it comes to municipalities.
Right.
Yeah.
Like spraying, going over and spraying, you know, a commercial property is different than a municipality. I'm not sure where all that is. I just want to make sure.
So maybe we can have Bill and Mike kind of get together and contact VLCT and find out. What the constraints may be on us, so thanks for that.
If we do have.
That's fine.
I, I, I don't mind, I, I just want, my main concern was to make sure that A, you were okay with this. And then B, finding out what we need to do for it. And then A, I see like where would it, the money, you know, my idea was a capital improvement fund. Well, as soon as we find out, yay, we do have enough, then we can go from there. But I just wanted you all to be on board with that. And knowing that we, we, we did exhaust, you know, our resources to find something that would work well for us. So, uh, your timetable is fine, I just don't want it, like I said.
So Bill, could you also like put this on next meeting's agenda, so we don't lose track of it?
We do have one town employee with a commercial applicator's license.
Yeah.
So I don't know if that will work or, you know, but VLCT will.
We can find out, Bill and I can find that out.
And that will.
Okay.
Yep, because, because I know when towns, some towns, if you notice, they spray round up around guardrails and stuff like that. Um, and there's certain things you have to do to be able for a town to do that. Usually they weed whack ours, but some, you'll see that and that, you go through a town, everything's brown and that's what they're doing.
Yeah.
We, so.
The, the transaction is a truck set up to do it. They drive right down the guardrail and spray it on.
Yeah, I wish they could kill the.
Set up there, actually.
But, yeah, but I don't, I think that's a good, good way to go.
Okay, so we'll revisit this in two weeks. Okay, so we'll revisit this in two weeks. We got a little more information from VLCT. And from Carrie and the auditor about what's in our capital fund, so.
Carrie. After June thirtieth, when. Budgets are reconciled and there's money, how soon after that do you have an idea of what's going to be moved into the capital improvement fund?
Good question because you think that I have a good. Idea of it after and like I've presented before. It's a general idea, but then Andrew comes in, but not till later. And he like adjusts everything and then he finally gives. That sweeping number and it's not until way down the road.
So, so this is where we are now, ten months later.
Basically, so I just got the sweepover number last week. The last.
So it's not like this is going to happen in July, right? Because you would think you'd be able to do that like in the month of July and.
Adjustments from the audit make a huge impact. And it's just accounting adjustments.
Right.
But it makes an impact of what I report out to you guys. And because he is a tax preparer too, I don't have him for several months to ask him. While taxes are going on. So now his tax time's over and I get to have him again.
Maybe we can work on his schedule and try to get him in early summer. Yeah, you know, because it would be nice for us if we knew, say, i- if you knew by the end of July, this is how much that we're going to put into the capital improvement fund. Then you can start making plans. Right, so we're not going to know what the actual amount from last fiscal year is until like next week. Okay, I, I was thinking it was quicker. I guess I was thinking it was quicker, that's all. And maybe we can ask him for some, some, yeah, some advice as to how to make this happen faster. Maybe you'll have.
General idea is great, but it's still scary.
Oh, I think we have this.
Yeah, I think it's about this much. So we can spend about this much.
Um, the only other thing we also did have a quick, because it was kind of the same time, a celebration meeting. So if Sharon has anything. That she wants to share with our celebration committee thing.
Right ahead.
No, 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 I just, we had that meeting. I.
There you go.
Wanted, you're the, you're the chair.
Sometimes. So we just decided to keep. All of the meat at the same. At the same amount as last time. And then go from there because we don't know. If, I mean, we didn't use all of the veggie burgers, however. What we've done in the past years is if there's. An overage, we give it to the fire department. Kind of as a thank you for all that they do, so. As long as everybody agrees, that seemed. So, and then we've got to get a hold of Procter gas and all of the. People that Bill's getting a hold of, so. The book bike, we already know we're going to have. And I'm sure Mark Foley will do his, but. It's a work in progress right now. That's all I have.
Okay, anything more for Mike? Okay, thank you very much. Dave Sears is not here. He's. Taking some time off. Anything from highway that needs to be.
There is a couple items. So we, we started our meeting off talking about the Green Mountain Plaza. Green Mountain Plaza is on board with the change in that intersection. There was a gentleman here from the state, Peter Elliott, or Peter Elliott was from Green Mountain Plaza and I don't see the gentleman's name from the state. I'm Chris Taft. He was here and. He said potentially we might need a traffic study to. Do this intersection change, but Bill was able to find the traffic study from two thousand and, I think it's thirteen or fourteen. I, I knew we had that done.
For the slip.
For, for that stuff down there, so. There was a discussion that the regional planning commission might help us if we do have to do. Study down there to get this done. The actual excavating, the actual work to change that is like nothing. You know, probably one day it'll all be reconfigured. Get rid of the island, put some new pavement down and paint and you're done. The intersection is wide enough. The signals will have to be like a light added, so you have the proper number of signals to go with the proper number of lanes. Usually we have three signals in two lanes. Down there, you're going to have three lanes and two signals, so it's going to be like backwards, but. They'll did that, so it's just a matter of getting some of these things in place. Like I said, the plaza was in favor of that. The selling point is the movement of traffic out of the plaza will double. Pretty much because you'll have two lanes going either left turn or straight and one designated right turn instead of just a one. So that went over pretty big. We had a very lengthy discussion regarding the. So shared use path on the north end.
Can I ask you a question about the? So with the signals, how does that work? Are we, I mean, we have to coordinate with the state and ask them permission to change the signals?
They, they will do the work and, and I don't, he didn't mention anything about a cost of the town. They'll have to add a, a light on that. I think the controllers there probably can handle all of this, but.
Is it likely that they are going to agree with they?
Instead of the staff, traffic study shows that it needs it, then.
Then, then the state will.
Instead of the congestion issues are like everybody says they are down there with traffic backing up, then the traffic study will probably back it up.
Right. You know, if you've come out of the Green Mountain Plaza at certain times, you know, the traffic down toward Michaels is people trying to get out and, and there's only one way out. And so it's, it's not the best designed.
No. Does the state participate if the congestion eased is in the plaza, which isn't really their thing? Because the impact out on Route seven isn't that bad.
Well, it's not going to be so.
Will they still participate?
Yeah, I think so.
Leave that they wouldn't.
Yeah, I didn't, you know, there, we're not going to be introducing any more traffic onto Route seven than there is now. It's just going to be a more. In a smoother manner. The same number of cars are going to exit that plaza. It's just they're going to come out of there.
It'll be a faster turning movement, which would give Route seven more seconds. So that may be why they're interested. Yeah, okay.
So, so that's where we're done. The long and short of the discussion on the north end sidewalk up there is that we had to come up with a. Steering committee. So at this point, this, we've decided, I guess, and if you guys are okay, would be. Kurt, myself and Dave and along with Bill. And we would be the ones that Stephanie would be.
Do we need to make that official so that somebody can fill in a document somewhere now?
No, it's just, we're, we're just, we're the goal between, between the board. And that's all the, the highway committee seemed like their place. So it will be active when Stephanie needs to do something, she'll schedule a meeting, we'll meet with her and then we'll come back and we already have. Our first. Thing that we have to decide on. So they have a, we have to come up with a requirements for the project, discuss the design consultant for the project. Two ways to go with this design consultant. You can just put out a request for information and then you kind of. Weed through these people and you choose some and then you give them to the state and they weed through them and whether or not they accept them. Or the state has a, on the ready process. They have six firms that are basically pre-approved. And so the, the per, the. Those consultants were CHA, DuBois and King, Fuss and O'Neil. Pyle Tanner, Stan Tech and VHB. So Dave, Kurt and I, in our capacity as steering committee, along with Bill's help. We have to pick three, so we're going to recommend to the board that we go with DuBois and King, Stan Tech and VHB.
Was that a motion?
That's a motion.
Motion is made and seconded to have Stan Tech, VHB and DuBois and King as the three consultants.
Applicants.
Applicants for a design call consultant. Discussion. We've worked with all three.
Right.
Yeah, that's why we chose them.
And the processes, and I don't know if you were involved with this. I've been involved with it once and I, and I think it was when we picked maybe the, the firm to do the. Project down on the south end of town. Everybody will respond to a specific number of questions. The steering committee will go through and rate them. And I forget, there's a number system that you use and you fill in it and then you tally everything up. And so then we, we will pick one that way. Their qualifications, similar projects, there's a whole list of stuff, so. And because we are going with the. Ones that are already approved by the state, that'll eliminate some time.
And they're talking like.
This is a four to six. Four to six year project. Ford's on the short side, so.
How long is our grant good for? Okay.
We might make it. You know, and, and because we're dealing with the state and this is a state grant and they're actually administering some federal funds through the state. You jump through every hoop, you got every eye, you cross every T and you, you know, check it twice and.
We figured out why this shared use bath is going to cost six hundred grand. And it's not in construction.
Have those. Free candidates for design consultant, any discussion? If not, all in favor, please say aye. Aye, motion carries. Okay, good.
So then there will be, you know, more information to come on that and we'll go forward. So the other thing, another thing we had on here was the Eco Car Wash. The sewer line and it's the recommendation of the highway committee that we ask them to flush that out. Get verification that it's clean and then release them from the memory of. Of that memorandum of understanding that was with Denny's and Ponderosa, seeing as though they're no longer going to be a restaurant. And they recycle a fair amount of their water. They, they will be just sending clean water down, so. But it would be our intent that they.
Okay, so is that a motion? Motion's made and seconded to respond to Eco Car Wash by saying flush out the. The sewer line. Make, who's going to ensure that it's clean?
They are required to, whoever they. Hire to, to flush it and make sure it's clean have to send.
I think if A1 is who they're talking.
They're probably talking, you know, they'll send verification that the project.
Yes, here it is. The cleaning contractor shall prepare a written report to the town of the conditions.
To that, this one time and then release them from that.
Okay, so. Motion's been made and seconded. And we should probably do a letter in response with this conditions in, but. Bill's about to say something.
I've read the, this thing a couple of times and there is a cost sharing provision. For other parts of the line. So you, you're probably going to have to have Kevin involved in. How we need to reword this with Denny's because we have not received proof from Denny's in. Any record that I could find, this has actually been done. So we've had this agreement in place for about ten years. I don't, I don't see any records of where we actually have proof it was done.
And it's for main hall five. Says it's, it's to be split, so presumably. Denny's is going to be contributing to. Unclimbliness. Where then if it did not exist, so if you let one of them off is the expectation then that Denny's is.
So there's a number for the manhole like, because they come to a junction. That's why it's like fifty percent from here to here. And a hundred percent from them to this, like it's a. It's not uncomplicated, but.
Okay, but this provision just says they're going to split the. Split on a fifty fifty basis, the cost associated with the maintenance, manual cleaning, main hall four. Right, four not five.
That's the one that where the, the, the four is the junction where they come together. And it goes underneath Route seven. That's, that, that was the intent of the, we're going to split this cost because you're both contributing to what goes into this.
So my point is if one is, if we're saying that one is no longer contributing. And the other one should be contributing all the problem in theory, right?
And they will, and they will have to. Contribute, they, they will have to bear the, the cost of making sure it's clean.
But that's not what this.
No, no, that's why it's got to be changed.
Well, the other party isn't, has they, have they been, has Denny's been contacted and been involved in any of this?
No, they haven't.
All right, so.
You know, I, I guess we're going to have to tell them that, you know. And I don't know, this, I mean, I'm guessing they know that this exists. But Bill said they don't, you know, we don't know if it's supposed to be cleaned. I know it's yearly.
Yes.
And, and so we, you know.
And we haven't seen any reports.
Right, and it's, and so there's a little bit on us for not following up with this. These things that come up every year that, you know, it's like the hydrant maintenance that we passed in ordinance, but unless you. Remembered it, say, hey, you guys didn't do what you're supposed to. So this is another one of those things, but we probably should let Denny's know that. Now that the, the. Ponderosa. Ground round are, are no longer operating a restaurant, that they are, that new owner is going to be relieved of part of this. Because they won't be putting any grease down. The ideal was to keep the grease from the two restaurants. And then, so you have two coming to one point and then a single going across. That's why they shared. The cost from one manhole across Route seven to the next one. But now any. Grease that would be in there would be solely from Denny's. So it would just be on them.
Do we invite, do we, do we reach out to Denny's and say, hey, you owe us reports? Or do we say, we're just going to move ahead and release?
What, we should probably have A1 inspect the line to Denny's while they're down there jetting that to. Ponderosa and get a report so we can see if Denny's is actually contributing any of the issue where the issue was mostly coming from. Ponderosa. I mean, Denny's, it's possible, I don't know what the, it's possible they have a grease trap that's taking care of all the situation. Denny's is an issue. So maybe, maybe we should have A1 inspect that line. Or I don't know, Dave wants to go play with his new camera.
But, you know.
So the original motion is to release Eco Car Wash. Do you still want to do that?
Yeah, from their portion, from whatever manhole back to their building.
I think Denny's, we're going to figure out what we're going to do with them.
All right.
Either, either way, we can get Eco Car Wash on.
Yeah, they, they can go away.
Any other questions on this before we vote?
I can see the wheels turning.
Well, I don't know. So it's.
He's an attorney in over there. Which is understandable.
That's good. I mean, that's, that's, we, we take that at.
So this is a recorded memorandum of an agreement. Regarding sewer maintenance, it's not the. Suggests me that there's separate documents, that's the actual agreement, the signature's on it. I wonder if. Benny's would object to one party being, you know, you know, literally released from a good obligation.
But because they no longer exist.
But, yeah, I mean, I don't.
Well, I think we can still let Eco stop that because you know.
I mean, I think it makes sense. If they're not contributing the problem, they shouldn't have to, but.
I mean, that memorandum might have to go away. We might have to do something different, something fresh with.
The, the release may have to involve releasing everybody. From that agreement, getting a new agreement.
Right, and that's fine too.
Yeah.
That'd probably be what Kevin's.
My thinking is, yeah, I think we're all. There's a, the, the sense of the group is that we agree, Car Wash shouldn't have to do this, but. The, the actual mechanism for doing it, I think, is a Kevin question.
Yeah, how, yeah, how are we going about it?
So we could still vote to release him from. His obligation under that, because I'd assume that went with a restaurant property. But it's no longer a restaurant.
I don't know. I mean.
They did, they, you know, got a restaurant hidden in that car wash someplace.
So I'm back to the timing. Do we hold on this motion? Do we table this motion until we have a chance to run this by Kevin? Or do we vote it right now?
I'd vote on it, but. I don't see where, you know, and then we'll ask Kevin how that should be reworded. Or how that we should move forward and, and we could talk with Denny's. Let them know what's going on.
I'd frankly rather just run it by Kevin first before we vote. I don't know how other people.
I agree.
So let's table any objection to tabling it.
That the folks that want it released by Dun, but I would still, I would still tell him. I, I still think that if they want to get it cleaned and get it done, to do it and then, and tell them the only holdup is the legal. The wording and how we, how we go about it from there. That's that one there.
It does, yeah, it does say that there was, there's the data. Well, this says they, there was an agreement negotiated.
Yeah.
In twenty thirteen. Terms of agreement, the agreement set forth in the letters of public record. Maybe that's all there really is other than.
Might be, and I I think we wanted something, I know, because they were coming up on the sale of. The property, and we wanted something in the land records to alert. Um, the proposed purchaser that there was this going on and they were gonna have to deal with it.
So it looks like what happened was there's an exchange of letters. That we decided was an agreement, and we, the town, it was memorandum and recorded.
That's right.
So. We don't necessarily know if everybody agrees with what the memorandum says.
So each, each restaurant was required to um, keep their portion clean. And then where where that sewer line became a common sewer line for the two, they both shared for the. So Denny's was required to pay from point A to the Y in in Ponderosa was to the other. That was where, those were their own expenses.
Right.
And then from that where where they came together and then went under route seven was a joint cost. So realistically now, there is no longer any.
Reason for the joint.
There's no, there's no, right, there's no reason for the the line from Ponderosa to that manhole. To be in this agreement because the the use of the property has changed, so it's no longer a restaurant, and that. And realistically, the cost of ma- maintenance from Denny's to that first manhole, that joint one, and then across route seven is all gonna be on Denny's.
Yeah, well, and but also the impetus for this agreement was. An issue with Ponderosa, so maybe that Ponderosa to to Chris's point was contributing, was the main contributor of the problem, but once you realize there was a joint. At that juncture, they figured, well, going forward.
How do we, how do we prove which is which?
If it's clean, then 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 it's not gonna cost Denny's any, which may be why they haven't. They not have done anything, and if that's the case, and we can ascertain that, then just release them both.
Yeah.
Yeah, we can ask Dave to.
Are we still?
So can.
Next up is Kevin or no?
Yeah, the agreement, I guess, has gotta go to Kevin as to how does, or do we go down and 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 check out Denny's end of it and see what?
Can can Dave go run his camera in there and?
Well, yeah, we'll see if, we can see if Dave can do that the next two weeks, and we'll know for the next meeting.
Okay.
And then.
All right.
Whether he runs his camera, has A one do it, whatever.
Whatever, or get A one to do it, somebody, whatever you want to. But I think we should check the Denny's side of it.
I think it should be quote, a cleaning contractor, so I think it should be A one, just to.
Okay, yeah, we'll get A, we'll ask Dave to hide, get A one down there again, check that, Denny's to that box. Um, allow Ecos to get their side done with with the indication that we're gonna release them.
I was asking, hey, did they already hire you to do this? Maybe they just did it.
Yeah. You know, we have been negligent on not keeping, making them give us the early reports.
Well. Still, the obligation remains that they are supposed to, whether we remind them or not, so, okay, what else do we have?
I don't know if we need to do any action on this, but there's a concern about deposits that are excavation permit deposits for working in the right of way, whatever. The checks are given to Kerry, they hang around, we never deposit them, after six months, those checks are no good.
Yeah.
So there's no way, if if the contractor doesn't do what they're told to do, then we're out the money, because it's not so. The suggestion from the committee would be that when we get those. Um, checks for digging in the right of way, excavation permit checks, to put them to cash them. Um, it's, I know it's gonna add a little work, but it would go some. And it would go somewhere, then it's our money, and if the contractor never comes back to get their deposit, they forfeit it. And I think that the, I do believe that what we need to change is a little wording in the um. The the what how that application that says that um, the applicant um, is required. To give proof that the the work has been done to the town satisfaction, and and it's up to them to get their money, and if, and if. It's, we'll put a period of time, if if the job is done and they don't come back to us within six months, they forfeit the money, and it's ours. So we can change that language a little bit, so, because I think you're sitting on some checks that have never been cashed, right? And they're no good, and most checks are no good after six months.
Right, yeah.
Or the other problem with this is that came up is. Contractor goes in, gives us a thousand, I think it's a thousand dollar check for doing the work. We take the check, we sign off, we let them go to work, they stop payment on the check. So now, it was no good, so we get them, Kerry deposits them, put them in that, um, I guess some kind of an escrow account, you know what? And then they'll just be there, and if they come back, we write them a check, and if they don't, then we'll figure out what to do with the money.
Yeah, so the the way the city DPW does it, because I do a bunch of work down there, is that, you know, you write your check, they cash it. And then the uh, city engineer comes out and inspects the project, once he he signs off on it. That goes back to town, city hall, and then the clerk re- reissues a check to you, gets sent in the mail. So Dave can go out.
They can go out and see what's done, and if it's done to his satisfaction, then.
Then the, yeah, the check gets mailed.
So that require a little difference on the permit bill, just some added language.
Yeah.
Okay.
Do you need anything from us, or?
I think we just got. I think you just gotta work it up and then approval at some point.
They're still working on the AEDs, uh, they talked about for highway probably getting two. One would be in the garage and one would be probably in Dave's truck, because.
You have quotes on your desk.
I saw the quotes on our desk. It's better quotes than the other day.
They are.
We told Bill to hold this, hold these people told to.
To negotiate a little bit.
So anyway, um, you'll see the quotes, and if we wanna move forward with this, um, I think we should. Um, what are we looking at, Bill, six?
Three to start.
Three to start.
Yes.
Three to start, Reynolds, Reynolds was the high bidder, or the high company, Reynolds is a preferred vendor. They are the only one that's, I believe, in state, the only one that you can actually find somebody, the rest of these are are. And they provide training, they do everything, and they are preferred vendors, so.
So they're the low bidder, it looks like.
And they are the.
Yeah, so the training, the training is not.
Except for.
Right.
They still have to go do that, but this is like, here, you know, you're gonna come and, not training them on CPR and AEDs, you're training them on this unit.
Yeah.
So, but the rep is is from New Hampshire, so he'd be willing to come here and.
How did we plan on paying for them?
Well, Reynolds has a couple of add-ons, which actually makes them the high bidder.
So the third one, or the first one, wherever you look at the number, is coming out of the rect depreciation fund to replace the current one at the pool. That's how the song got started.
Okay.
So you can figure out how to pay for the other two. I need to know if I can, if you're fine with that, that I can order it out of my depreciation account for an existing one that needs to be replaced. So I brought up the idea of buying more.
Yeah.
Because we don't have them, so we got locked in together, but I need it, so your mind's being eight four out of my depreciation account. You can figure out where the other two come from.
Yeah, she's got a highway miscellaneous or something.
Want to pick up the bill, I mean. You have a cabinet? Well, if it fits in the current cabinet that I have, then I don't need a cabinet, but I won't know that till I see it out of the hallway. Well, the one I have at the pool is a little bit smaller than that one. Yeah, I know.
So.
And is it a Reynolds, or?
I'm sorry.
Is that one a Reynolds?
The one that I have?
Yeah.
No, the one I have is probably. Seven, eight years old that we bought because we had to by law have it at the pool. And we bought one hard stock, or which they had the same kind at school. Um, so I thought because it was consistent, we didn't have anything here, we've never had anything here until recently. And so then I saw this sort of like, in school, got the same type as what we have here.
So it's, but it's not one of these companies.
It is, it is, it's the same thing as we have in the hallway.
Yeah.
Same brand, same.
Which is which one, is it?
Soul, AED plus.
It'd be from Reynolds.
That was my question, okay, so.
So the the model, I'm I'm sorry, so the model is the same model, same manufacturer and model for all three of these. The vendor was different, the cabinet, so the cabinet and the case are independent from the the. The the two lower prices include a cabinet, Reynolds does not, they have sell, they sell pieces individually. That's the best thing they could do, so the thought was to get a cabinet for the highway, highway garage. And a case for one to put in Dave's truck, so they have one at the garage and they have one with them if they're out.
So the case is a portable thing?
Yes.
Yeah.
So for for. For the pool, if we get, we we've got a, he's got a cabinet.
Yeah.
It should be the same model.
Yes.
Yeah.
So if we get the Reynolds one to seventeen hundred dollars, that would be. The way to go for that one.
Yeah.
Right.
Originally, they were about nineteen hundred dollars for Reynolds, and I said, we're we're probably, we're looking to buy three, so I back to them, we really wanna buy three. So he he gave us a better price.
Well, either way, there's money in the depreciation for that, so. But any, he only needs the unit, he doesn't need a case, so.
Reynolds is the highest, if if you take the case.
But he doesn't need a case, he has a case.
He does, but for the other two, we will, one, well, one will need a case, one will need a cabinet. The thing is, is I would still go with Reynolds for two reasons, one, they're in state, and they are. They're they're a vendor we dealt with, they they do, you know, the other ones, I don't know where the other ones. Their website vendor, so there's no support that goes with those, or not in-state support.
They also offer onsite training, Reynolds is the only one that does.
Yeah, yeah, so I would, I would move that we we buy the AEDs from Reynolds. Um, Mike would be, Mike would be allowed to. Replace his to his depreciation fund, and then we'll figure out how we're gonna pay for the two for highway.
Okay.
Either out of, um, I think Dave has a miscellaneous account.
Well, we do have, I don't know, we do have this in the pack, yeah, would this clue you in?
But one of, but one of the things about highway that's unique, and I bring this up a lot, is highway has funds. That are part of the carryover.
Yes.
That can be, uh, that are there in his account, that can be spent for any item within highway. They're not any particular line, it's it's, you know how we sweep the money from all the other budgets and the capital improvement? Highways goes into a carryover, so if Dave at the end of the year has seventy five thousand, a hundred thousand, two hundred thousand left over, it's in a carryover. Amount, he has his regular budget, so if we overspend. His miscellaneous account and buy two AEDs at the tune of, well, one's gonna be about nineteen hundred and twenty six dollars, and the other one is gonna be twenty. One hundred and twenty five dollars roughly. So. Those amounts, there's money in that account that'll cover those, the the individual line item will be overdrawn, but there's money there to.
Okay, let me understand your motion, you got, you were buying three, we're buying them from Reynolds.
Yeah.
And depending upon what, whether they need a cabinet or a case. That's up to the the two departments.
Yeah.
For rec, the money comes from the depreciation.
Cause he is replacing a.
And the, for highway, we don't know where it's coming from.
I I think there's a miscellaneous line, or there's line in.
There's garage, highway garage utilities. Which would actually be fitting for at least one of them, because it's.
Is there a miscellaneous, is there a miscellaneous line for highway?
Um, yeah, miscellaneous right there, yeah, it's overspent, though.
Yeah, do we already use that?
Okay.
But, I mean, highway garage utilities would be fitting for one, because one is going in the highway garage.
Yeah.
And the other highway miscellaneous?
Yeah, could do that, miscellaneous or.
Well, I guess you got maybe just enough for one, the utilities.
Just as a side note, um, we only use the AED, and the AED is only stored at the pool for June, July, and August.
Hmm.
And then it's stored at the highway garage in the warm, so technically from. For just the three months that I use it on site at the pool. It's, it's actually mine is sitting in Dave's office, and it sits in this office, so. But it's not.
Maybe we don't need it.
They will essentially have three for the majority of the year, except for the three months that I need it, so I'm just.
Maybe we should just purchase one for Dave's truck.
Why, buy the one for the truck, yeah, I didn't know, I didn't, I didn't.
I, I, as you were, as you were talking, I wanted you to understand that I I don't keep it in the building.
Right, because it's not heated, right.
It's not heated, and it's not heated, so my stuff that needs to stay warm, like my, whatever, my stuff, it stays. Dave gives me a couple of slots in the highway garage to store my little.
So we could buy, just buy a cabinet for the highway garage, put it in the cabinet and buy one for the truck, in the case, that works. That's a better plan.
As long as you have your cardiac arrest around Dave and not elsewhere.
That was joking, man, Dave said it would probably be him if anything, so.
The other.
So are we buying two now?
Yeah, we'll only need two.
Okay, so let's withdraw the old motion, we'll start a new motion Joey makes for two. One is for the rec department, are we still using your depreciation fund? And that will reside at the pool for three months of the year, and then it will go over to highway department. And the other will be purchased by the highway department out of, you wanna use utilities for this one?
I'd take it out of miscellaneous.
And put it out of miscellaneous, okay. All right, so there's your motion, is there a second? No sec, oh, thank you. Any further discussion?
Yeah, man, we did specify that we need a case for the highway.
Yeah, the one will have the case.
Oh, have a case.
So we we're gonna need a case and a cabinet for highway. And one unit. Cause.
Two units.
Yeah, and two units, one, one for highway and one for rec.
Okay. There's, fix that in the minutes, Bill, okay. All in favor of the motion, please say aye.
Aye, aye.
Aye, motion carries unanimously.
I'll try to get through this, um, we have. Um, Robert Clark drew up easements for the two properties on Stratton Road for that culvert. I'm guessing it would be appropriate that these get forwarded to Kevin and make sure he's happy with them.
Yes.
You have a copy on your desk, or you want to, that's, that's what we, that's what he drew up, they got all the necessary information for the two.
Do you have them, Bill?
I do have them, yes.
Okay, would you send them up to Kevin, please, for Kevin?
Um, we're gonna get ahead of the game on this, um. We'll have easements for this property before we start construction, that was.
What a good idea, so novel, yeah.
Um, so we have some numbers, and if I can find them here. Um, the approximate cost of the culvert on Stratton Road, total estimated construction cost is five hundred and eight thousand. Um, Dave's gonna start working on a structures grant, and that will be a twenty percent match. That's what the last one was, so we're gonna get started on that, um, do that.
Do you need anything from us right now?
I don't believe so.
Okay.
He's, he's jumping on that, the other project that Robert Clark was working on was the North Grove Street at the Cusell Residence. To take some more off of that hill. Um, that comes in at a little over three hundred thousand, and we're a little iffy on whether or not we wanna. Do that kind of money um, for a single landowner project that, that could snowball into being.
Yeah, me too, me too.
I I think one of the other things we could do is maybe research some different um, solutions to that problem.
So, dude, was the issue with the landowners coming out of their driveway, or is that just?
They had the, so if you familiar with the old Girdon property on North Grove Street, well, fam, no, well, as you're heading north. The driveway on the west side of the building comes out, or the property comes out on the Grove Street, right on the south side of a little rise. When you're coming out there, the line of sight is maybe from here to Kerry's office, maybe a little further. Cause it dips back and you can't see cars, with the average speed on Grove Street somewhere between forty five and fifty. Uh, they're on you in a heartbeat, so that uh, four or five years ago, the town Byron went up, took off. About what, four feet?
Three, four feet.
Three or four feet lowered it down, so it was worse, it is better, but it's still not great. So we hired um, Robert Clark to come up with a plan, and to get that so the line of sight meets what would be considered the norm. Um, you gotta take out a bunch, and it's a fairly expensive project.
I just don't.
And I think that we probably wanna look at maybe some different solutions.
Can I move?
See if there's something, I know, I know that the landowner um, said that he would help. But I don't think he thought it was gonna be this expensive, um, and one of the problems with that is. There's more than just an excavator required, there's trucking and there's a lot going on. There's more than just an excavator required. There's trucking and there's a lot going on and there's oversight. So I think that we should just. I'm not saying don't do it or come up with that, but if there was some funding available, so I don't know if there's any safety grants through the. V-Trans that would, uh, fix line of sight problems, what we could apply for. These are things maybe we can look into. But I won't say that we should say a hundred percent no, but I think we should look for some other.
As for right now, it's gonna definitely be a. A no until finding other funding.
Yeah, that's pretty. And then the last thing we discussed was the Simons Avenue and Route Four. Intersection and we need to get the state involved and we just haven't got there with that. Hey, Dave did mention that cars coming. East on Route Four and turning on to Simons Avenue are actually driving in the bike lane. They, they just pull over onto the shoulder bike lane and zip right up Simons Avenue.
So coming.
So you're headed east on Route Four and you're going up Simons. They, they, they don't stay in their lane and make a turn. They just pull right over.
I do that all the time. Sure, I stay in the correct lane.
Um, driving on the shoulder of the road is an unacceptable practice. Am I right, chief? Making right-hand turns from the shoulder of the road is, you know, Post Road and Route Seven. If you're turning onto Post Road, you want to have your eyes on that right mirror because you will be passed on the right. Somebody going the same way you're going.
So if I go up Route Seven. And I pull over on the side and right up the side to turn right, I'm not supposed to do that?
Are you supposed to stay in your lane of traffic, Sharon?
Well, this is an educational meeting now, isn't it?
So the, the cure to. The cure to Simons and Seven is going to be a T intersection, but that would require the states involvement. They'll probably want a traffic study for that too. I don't know. Who knows? Anyway.
Well, usually you're trying to turn into your driveway. And. Somebody right on your bumper and you know, when you hit the brakes, you're gonna get bumped.
Technically, when you turn into your house, Sharon, you're supposed to stay in the traveled lane and not be on the shoulder.
Well, thank you for telling. Before Ed had to stop me and tell. Think he knows that.
Have you noticed Sharon that the entire world is in a hurry to go somewhere? They're, 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 they're in, it's, it's amazing.
You know what pisses me off is people go by you to turn in a driveway.
Twelve feet up the road.
Yeah, try doing that when you're driving a dump truck and people cut you off in order to turn into the gas station.
Or, or you're driving your tractor from one end to.
You don't realize that sixty thousand pounds of dump truck don't stop in twelve feet.
I don't want it to stop. It can stop pretty quick. I don't want it to stop that quick because it's kind of expensive. Brakes and tires are really expensive.
Are we all feeling better now about our own driving habits? That's it for highway.
God, Ed, I commit that crime every day.
I could no longer drive.
Marcia, if you're still there, please, um, come right in and help divert our attention.
I just took a quick nap, so I'm, I'm good to go now. No, it was actually quite entertaining. See, uh, to you, Joey, we're gonna be going down to, um. Eco Splash Holdings to, uh, visit the site and to assess what's currently there as of April first. So we'll check to see if there's any, um, restaurants being built inside.
There'll be a Starbucks in there, don't you worry.
And on that same note, um, we've got a lot of site visits, um, lined up already. Uh, we've got three to do tomorrow. Uh, we did three brand new builds, um, a couple of weeks ago. So. We've been working on, um, you know, putting those into the system. We're pretty much done with that. But a lot of, a lot of sheds, a lot of decks, a lot of. Um, you know, home improvements. It's been. Really interesting and, and quite busy. On, on the other hand, um. I just want to give you an update on business personal property. As of today, we have. I have processed eighty-five. And we have still not received fifty-eight out of the fifty-eight. Most of them are quite large. Accounts. Gail is coming tomorrow with what she's processed, which is eighty-three accounts. So I think we're doing quite well between, you know, the two of us. We do have some new accounts that we'll have to put in. I've been putting in. Into the GMK and then having, um, either Jack or Marie. Carry those numbers over into the grand list. Right now, that's the only way we can do it. Yeah, we'll be, we'll be bringing up what she has done and then we will be putting her figures into the grand list. I guess other than that, I mean, that's, that's about it. We're just extremely busy like everybody else.
So Marcia, what's your target for lodging the grand list?
Good question. It's a real good question. I'm hoping not to have to ask for an extension. But we may have to ask for a small one. Date, of course, is, is June fifth. And I think if maybe, we'll see how, where we are, where we are. You know, at the end of, at the end of May, we're, we're really pushing to get things done. So I know last year we had to have, you know, three, two extensions and we didn't use. Uh, the second one totally, so.
Yeah, I remember. Yeah. Okay, well, just let us know. Any questions for Marcia?
So Marcia, the subject came up with the school board, um, about the CLA and reappraisal. And the notion that. Potentially it might make sense for us to. Reassess as soon as possible, whatever that means. Yeah. So where, where, where does that stand?
Well, right now we're gathering, we're filling out the forms that we have to send to PVNR to get approved to. To start a, um, you know, the request for, uh, proposals from the approved, um, list of acceptors. So that kind of went on the back burner because this is a busy time of year, but I think. Once we get through tax time. Come September, uh, which will be, uh, a better time to, you know, head into this. We'll start once again and hopefully get it. Up to PVNR probably. Late fall, hopefully.
So what, what is that that has to be filed with PVNR?
It's a request to actually go out for proposal. There's a, quite a lengthy, quite a lengthy process. It's about eighteen to twenty pages. Of, uh, information that we need to present to PVNR.
As part of the request?
Correct. We haven't had an order. But we're seeing it ourselves. You know, with the, with the, the sale of homes have generally slowed down. There hasn't been much. At all. I think we've had. After April first, I think we've only had maybe three sales. So far. We're on it. We, we've started it. So between the three of us, hopefully we can get it done. We've got samples that, um. From the city, um, Katie Wangoyce had, uh, sent us her, um, all of her work in St. Alden also. So we've got some pretty good information to, uh, go to.
Any other questions for Marcia? Okay, thank you, Marcia. All right, Bill Sweet, Town Administrator. Oh, sorry, Marty. Yes. Okay. So we are on. Action needed. A board to review for approval, the updated local emergency management plan. And. Mine is a little damp because somebody spilled. Okay, wait, I'll get the one in the green folder, which is not damp.
Your phone number is reversed.
Yes, they are. I just realized it. I'll change.
Is your cell number three, five, three? That's the way they are in my phone. Minor glitch in the.
Okay, Marty, what are we looking at and why do we need this?
Why do we need this? We need to do this every year. So if there is any kind of, um, reimbursable. Damage due to a major natural catastrophe. You would be, oh, funds could be available. We don't do this on a yearly basis. They say we're not entitled to any.
All right, that got our attention. So who goes over it to update it?
I do.
Okay. And you've done it and it's all updated?
I updated by misplaced, by mislabeling your phone number. Correct it again. Actually, this is the same as last year. And that's why you only got the three pages. The state requires the first page. Signed. The second page I just put down there for your information because I've gone through all these elements. The NIMs adoption document is not required by the state, but our local, um, planning commission requires. Give it to them.
Okay. So.
You need a motion?
We need a motion to, um. Accept our updated local emergency management plan and to authorize Kurt and I to sign. And looks like me to sign on the NIMs document. Is there a second? Second. Questions made and seconded. Any discussion? Privy seal of the town of Rottland. Who the hell put that in? Given under my hand and, and the privy seal of the town of Rottland. That's in the NIMs documents. Somebody was.
The keeper of the privy seal. Somebody in here with a wig and a staff.
They always try to change something. That last part was never in the NIMs before. Actually, it's not in the NIMs. You look at the NIMs on the state website, that's not there.
Not there.
So Mary and Kurt are signing to say two different things. Do either of you know what those things?
Yeah, I'm, I'm the one that has the ICS training.
Okay, right.
On the select board.
And I'm attesting that we've adopted the NIMs and the LIMs. All in favor of. Authorizing us to sign and adopting this updated emergency management plan, please say aye. Aye. Okay. Anyone opposed?
Now, while you're doing the signing, can I join with my other report?
Yes.
Okay. Uh, I'm giving the report for Queen Mary. On our gardens.
The other Mary, by the way.
So you think you're the queen, huh?
Sure I'm not.
My wife doesn't think she is either, but I call her. She's agreed and we drove up. To, um. Of course, I just went blank on the post road. And the sewage pump station there, Post Road and Route Seven. Um, we looked at that and. She's gonna come up with a plan. There's some stuff that's gotta actually be pulled out of there. It's just. And some stuff just trimmed and then stuff added. So. We're gonna add, take that on as well as doing the fire departments and doing the. Out here in front of the building.
You and Mary do a lot of good work.
Yes, you do. Do, do you, are you able to tap any budget to reimburse yourselves for the plantings that you put in?
We did.
Okay, you already did. Okay, very good.
I suppose if you had a bunch of stuff there on Post Road that needed to be moved, there's. Highway crew that will assist you.
And I'm trying to get Mary to go down and see if I can get it. Get her to make a decision this week. Because Dave's away on vacation and the guys are just doing a lot of jobs. And if she could tell me now what's gotta go, I can get them to pull it out.
Well, anything that's invasive, but I think that was, we, didn't we hire that landscaping done?
I, I have no idea.
Yeah, whatever was done, it was done quite a long time ago.
So do you need our permission for anything? You're just letting us, because Queen Mary says it's okay, so.
Oh, one more thing. Uh, uh, you can't tell her that I said that.
It's in the minutes.
It'll be your luck. You'll be flipping through and find it on.
Yeah, and I'll give that.
That back to Mary.
Oh, you need it. Okay. Thank you. All right.
Yeah, I'm good to go.
Should be good.
Thank you all.
Welcome. Thanks for helping us out. Appreciate it. Okay.
We appreciate it.
Thanks, Marty.
All right. Good evening. So a few things to go over. Anything that was on your desk has been covered, which is good. Just a few items from the packet. Most of it relates to. The items on the agenda. I do have an update on the service road. VHB has been busy, but they are working on it. They were working on. Some of the, uh, stormwater wetlands work, uh, and. Uh, Evan said they should have an update for us for the next meeting. So that's, that's coming. The, Joey actually mentioned the private fire hydrant ordinance earlier. We got our very first report today.
Yee-haw.
What do you know? So wasn't quite right, so I'd ask them to, to fix a little bit, but, but they're, they're coming in. That we, we did, I, I did find a company that does it. And a couple of people have asked for anybody. So I've said, this is not something we recommend, but it's just somebody that, that we, we know does it. So they've, they're, they're. Gonna be getting a few phone calls. So, uh, it is actually working. So that's, uh, that is, that is underway. We, there are, we, we, we have not met, the fire committee did not meet yet to, to talk about any updates to it, but we should, we should get there at some point. Scholarships. Everything has been given to the committee and I think they're, they're well underway. Um, I think you've got everything now. We, this, the high school has a deadline of Thursday afternoon. So if you can. Get it to me by Thursday morning. That'd be wonderful. Cause. She said May nine, the, May ninth is there, is there a hard, hard deadline? I'm like, oh, okay. So.
Well, you only have to prove the expenditure, right?
Right.
Or which is already budgeted for.
Well, so we don't have to approve.
We don't.
But we've always approved the, the list. You get us the list and we keep it quiet. Yeah.
I mean.
We'll just.
So it's from the select board.
I think it might be.
You can delegate that to us.
They have to have it by.
She said May ninth. Like, I, I, that was pretty quick.
I thought she previously said, uh. Thirteenth or something.
Uh, I think her last one was, because I asked her if she needed everything or just.
Cause I was hoping maybe a meeting on Friday, but.
I, I will, I will look again. I'm saying here, I'll, I'll, I'll get back. Yeah, there, there weren't, weren't a lot. Yeah. So, so it's true, but. Uh, but we've talked about, uh, maybe changing the process or changing the application. We talked about that actually last year about changing the process. But we've talked about maybe changing the process or changing the application, talked about actually last year about changing the process or updating the application, and we just never got a chance to, to do that, so.
We met about it and decided not to take any changes, and then we authorized it to go out and then, you know. It sounds like we need to get it out sooner, next.
So when, when the, when the budget passes, we, we look at the application, say anything want to change, and then we just change based change the due dates and send it out again. But we, but that, we, we have a, we can't send it out, we can't, we can't open the window up any earlier. I guess we could, but we don't know if the budget could get approved or not, so.
Last year wasn't really very long after that. I guess we got it out, but, you know, and I'm not sure what she's gonna put. And I don't think she listed all the names. I, I don't think, my recollection is at Rottland, the names were not known until I announced them. I think she just had to have a line in the program.
Yeah.
Do you need to know if we're just forthcoming or do you know all the details? She said, I need all the details.
No.
I said, I, I.
Is this Anne?
Yeah.
Tell her we'll, we'll, we'll get it to her the twenty second. Because that's still, I mean, when is class night? Really, that's what you're aiming for.
That, that was, that was the information that I got, so I, I will.
So that's like three, at least three.
I don't know if they're trying to do their programs or what, what, I, I really don't know, so.
I don't know, I mean.
But at some point, we should, we should have a scholarship committee meeting just to go over the application in general, and we can talk about other ways to be able to accept them, you know, and if we want to change anything in there.
This is Tuesday, so if we, I don't know if it's necessary to warn this meeting, but if we have to warn the meeting, we can't really meet before Friday, right?
As long as only two of you show up.
But I, I, Friday morning, I have to be in Middlebury for physical therapy.
Do. What about, what, I mean, we can meet on Thursday, I guess, if it's, if that's acceptable and you're available, but.
Have to look at my calendar, I think.
Can talk about that after, but, I mean, for warning purposes.
Yeah.
I don't, didn't we ever have to warn that?
You know, I think we warned it and then we immediately went into executive session because of all of the finances.
Right.
Right, so, I mean, it's, it's not a public process anyway.
Right.
So.
So, and. So. We're gonna make the decision. I don't, so if the board needs to vote on any, to authorize that or something, then I guess we need to do that now.
We do. We get the list. We get the list and we know who's getting what, and we basically say, sounds good to us. And we vote it, so it becomes, this is an award of the select board. Yeah.
Yeah, okay.
Back to me, I'll, I'll look it up again just and, and see.
Well, so what do you want to do? I mean, I don't think we should wait two more weeks.
Do we have any other reason to be back here?
No, well, you and I have several committee meetings. We're gonna be having committee meetings every day, but not as a.
I think we're good for a while. Building, whatever.
We could do it, depending on how fast Sharon reads, we could do it tonight, executive session at the end of this meeting.
Could adjourn.
I don't have a problem with that. I mean.
Recession, we could give you a recess and if you guys, I mean, if there aren't that many and you guys know.
I can, you know.
So. But I don't think it would take that long. If you and I sat here and went over them, I think we could come up with it tonight.
I think it might be, we could at least discuss whether we could in executive session and then.
Right.
You know how many scholarships you're probably gonna give?
Well, we, there's only six.
Yes, six or seven applications.
That's it.
When was the deadline? When was the deadline for the application?
Uh, April twenty first.
Alright, so the chance, so you've got what you're gonna get.
Oh, no, they're closed.
And if you remember, a couple years ago, one of the high schools hadn't even told the kids about it.
I, I emailed every high school and so I went down. No, no, I don't. Thank you. I, I went down the list of, in, in our, in, of who we paid tuition to. I emailed all those schools, say, hey, tell your kids we got, we got these things, and only six kids sent an, sent an application.
And that doesn't even make sense, really.
I don't disagree.
There is one other thing we could do. Hate to do it, because my ego's involved, but we could just say, release the names embargo it, go with what, and then we'll ratify your selection at our next meeting. We could do that. That's why my ego's involved, because I'm giving up a piece of.
It's good enough for me.
You could do that, alright? You guys okay?
So you're telling us we, 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 we meet and decide is basically what you're telling us.
Subject to our, you know, ratification.
Yeah, we're just gonna say, okay, anyway.
Well, as long as, as long as Anne doesn't print something that you changed.
She can't print the names.
I don't think.
They don't usually, they don't.
So, I don't know.
And you make the, just some, because I had a certificate or a letter, right?
Yeah, we do a letter, yeah.
You do.
Well, and then you have to go to the.
So I, I would just tell her that you have X amount of scholarships that you're presenting to the high school students this year.
Is it all Rottland High School students?
No, there's a couple others, but, yeah, I guess what I'm not following for me and is what she's going to do with the information. Cause you produced a letter.
Yeah.
You know, one of us goes to present.
Right.
And then, uh.
Yeah.
And then the checks get rid later.
Later, right, I mean, they, they, there's a process to request the, to request the payment, so, yeah, absolutely.
And it's not, she does have a, so I, I sit on the board of the Rottland Public Schools Foundation. Rottland Public Schools Foundation has a pot of money. There are different scholarship decisions that have to be made that the foundation then writes a check for. And so there's probably a deadline for that, but we're writing the checks for it, so.
Yeah, so I wouldn't worry about it. I just heard that we're gonna have some scholarships to present.
I was kinda surprised that, like, we're, like, I, I don't, I don't know that we can do that, but, but, oh.
Yep.
Yeah, no.
I would tell her we got some scholarships to present and we'll be there and.
Yep.
Yep.
Problem solved.
Well, we'll see, we can, we'll plan. Alright, thank you.
And the time crunch is gone.
Yep. Alright, the remaining things, we have, do what's going on the, Mary just put on the, the agenda. That's what's left.
Yes, I think. Let me just, yeah, okay, go ahead.
Did you want to, or are we gonna do?
Well, I was just gonna say personnel committee meeting.
Yes.
We met, we are within. The nine pages of, of closing in on.
That's impressive, like.
More information to come.
More information to come. Highway committee met and we heard their report earlier. Police committee met just before tonight and we voted on the purchase
Yep.
of the short long gun. How am I doing? Okay.
Better.
Okay. The rec committee reported and the townwide celebration reported, so we're done there. So let's skip down to action needed and we've done A. E nine one one address issues.
Okay, so in your packet, you have two different maps. B one and B two. We'll start, we'll start with one. That is Camerack Lane. Right dead center is a new, is about to be a new driveway for a new house on that lot, which is two thirty one. In putting that number in, when I worked with Tal at the state, we quickly realized that the driveway just beyond it, which is three thirty five, is a higher number than the driveway that becomes after it, on the other side of the road at two forty eight. Three thirty five is numbered well wrong. It's supposed to be two forty five. So it is a, it's a sequence issue.
And I recently adopted.
We did not adopt the policy.
We didn't?
No.
We sent it to Kevin because we're changing it into an ordinance.
I see.
Oh, yeah, that's what we did, yeah.
Well, that would be our reasoning.
It does, it does violate the state rules for, for nine one, but.
So this is just one driveway, it's gotta be changed?
It is a, the, it is, so I, I, there's only a handful of addresses on the entire street. So I asked him to look at the entire street. That is the only one wrong.
And it's gotta be two, it should be two forty five.
It should be two forty five.
We notify them that due to the unforeseen.
Cause three thirty.
Error in measurement.
Mister, Mrs. Bowley, you're gonna have to change your address.
Yeah. It's not the end of the world. It, and it, and it stays.
And it's, it's out.
Right, and it stays in. Confirmation with what we've.
Yes.
Basically voted to do is make sure that they meet the two requirements.
Yep.
Right and left is right and sequence is right, and this is definitely a sequence. You know, I think it probably could have been as simple as a, you know, when it was forwarded, it was just a, you know, done wrong, you know, instead of, it's three forty five now, right?
Three thirty five.
Three thirty five.
And there's a three thirty six, which is at the end on the right, so it really doesn't make sense. It really is.
Yeah, it's out of sequence and it's gonna, so I would just recommend we send them a letter and tell them that, you know. This is the situation that's arisen.
How did?
And it's out of sequence. Some, somehow rather that got numbered wrong.
Yep.
That's gotta be the worst numbering wheel we ever owned. That driveway's been there a long time.
Oh, it has, yeah.
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 So the one.
Eighteen years.
Where four thirty seven is, that's a driveway, not the road.
The, the black line is the road. And that ends at the house at four thirty seven. It's got a very short, very, very short driveway. Three thirty, three thirty six, which is the branch off of that to the right, is a house. That, that red dotted line is a driveway.
Yeah, yeah. Yeah, that's the old farmhouse.
Yep.
And it's the tenement house up at the end.
You're pretty knowledgeable there, sunshine.
Right in his backyard. Knows what's out there. So. I kinda remember.
Yep.
Been a while.
Yeah, I know the neighborhood.
We laid, we laid a whole bunch of hose up, Bowick's one time pumped.
Oh, and the neighborhood remembers you.
On the leak like a sieve. I don't, I think we pumped, I don't remember where.
Are you sure? Well, okay, wait. Two forty, alright, I see, because it's where it leaves.
Yeah, it's where it leaves the main road.
Okay.
It's not where the house itself is.
Right.
Okay.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Cause even, then it's still wrong, Mary, even if. It's still wrong, because the last one is four forty seven.
Right.
So, when, I mean, I guess that's all we do, right? We just send them a letter and tell them that, you know, in review of the nine one one numbers, this number is out of sequence and we would like you to change it at your earliest possible convenience.
We, we give them a due date. We give a, we, we, we give a date. Usually thirty or sixty days.
Can we also stress that it's for their safety?
Yeah, oh, yeah, sure, absolutely.
I mean, that's one where you could not know the road and go zipping up there.
Right.
And you're, and you go by two forty eight and you're thinking, I got at least another.
Oh, yeah.
By, you know.
It, it, it doesn't, yeah, it, it doesn't make sense.
It's kind of a hidden driveway.
And, and, and the fact that the house.
So, yeah, there's, there's, there are a few.
Going up through the pine trees.
That's a long, do you remember laying hose up?
I sure do. Yep, that was. Yep, sure did. It didn't last long. So the other one, I, there is a new house being built right now inside that yellow box. The red line to the left of it is where the driveway is.
Okay, yes. So. That's Partridge Lane, right?
Well, no, it's, it is actually nothing. It is Crestway Drive. So one ninety eight, two hundred shows as a house. There is no house there. That's, that's, that's coming off the map.
That's a lot.
It's a lot, which actually is owned, so this is Louis Russo Junior.
Okay.
Uh, so he actually owns this lot and he owns the lot where that two hundred is. He actually owns both, both sides of that. There is no two hundred. It's not, there's no building there, it's coming out.
But.
He needs a number.
That was always.
Partridge Lane is on, is on some old maps, but it is.
It was never developed.
Never.
A road, it is not a town road.
Yeah, because at one point Jimmy Paul Carroll, I think, owned these lots.
So if you look at the bottom there, two sixty six owns what looks like a letter F.
Yeah.
And it, it did, it did used to be actually individual lots, which is why it almost looks like there's a cul-de-sac there.
Yeah.
So, the question becomes. We, we need to add a new number for this new house, and it's going to become off of that branch. It could have a Crestway Drive address, however. If another house gets built, if, on, on, if, if down the road, now it is one lot, it is not individual lots right now, but if another one gets built later on, it would require a new name for a new town road. So, so Tyler says the state standard does address this, is a town can make the decision to change, knowing a third lot is there. There isn't technically a third lot, but there could be, so it's, it's an unusual situation. So if we change it now, we are, and we are going to inconvenience one person. If we do it later, because we have to, it's going to inconvenience two.
So you're saying this one ninety eight is a Crestway.
Is a Crestway Drive address.
But there's really to get.
Which is interesting, because it comes off of that little shore.
Red line is their driveway.
Yeah.
Right, so there are actually some old maps that do say it's Partridge Lane, which is, is not a town highway. Crestway Drive Extension is also one that Tyler suggested, he said either name is, is fine, they both pass muster.
So.
So we, do we need that white part, Billy? Do we need, do we need to name that?
Well, we don't have to. We can, we can get away with a Crestway Drive address for him. Kind of.
But it's gonna be coming off the white part of the.
Yes, the road, that, that part is being extended.
Like that.
So. That's, and that, and that's the issue, so.
I think we need to name that little chunk of road.
He owns both lots, so he owns a lot across the street where two hundred is.
Yeah.
But the rest of that, beyond him, is all one parcel owned by the house at two sixty six.
By Tony Bosnic.
So, what did you say about the third one?
I know that. This one here?
Well, that used to be.
That one's owned by the person that bought this land.
You said something happens if that unsells.
About every one of these.
So.
I'm very intimately familiar, because I've been off the road right here.
Once there are three occupied buildings on, basically like a road, they have to become their own name.
I don't know if the same.
So right now, right now, there's going to be two. So if we make the decision now to make that little section, Crestway Drive Extension or Partridge Lane, either are fine. Then the new house gets a brand new number off, off this new road name. One ninety eight has their number changed to whatever the new one is.
Right.
My thought was Crestway Drive Extension, it would cause them the least amount of, but their number, their number will be drastically different. I mean, it's gonna go from one ninety eight to like
Ten.
Five, like, but it's.
I think that's, I think for lack of confusion, that white section should have its own name.
I don't disagree.
And I'm, I'm a firm, I, I would go with the Partridge Lane, because that's what it was supposed to be, and I always.
Yeah. I'm not sure where that came from, but it, it is on an old map that actually Louis brought in and.
Yeah, whoever was subdividing that at the time wanted to name it that.
Yeah, and actually, there, there were, there were lots that were actually identical, like they were just, they're like cut right up, but.
So if we call that Partridge Lane, then that one ninety eight will be like five or ten, whatever the measurement.
Yes.
The lot on the same side of the road will have.
Is, is not gonna have a number. There's no, there is no house there, there's nothing.
Be no assignment until the house is there.
Right, there's nothing there.
And we just need to make sure.
Bought that lot.
Huh?
Louis bought that.
Bought both of them.
Yeah, he bought, so he owns across the street, yeah.
Yeah.
But do we know for sure that this one's gonna have the access over here and not just put.
Where that, where I put those red lines, that is the driveway, it's there.
Yeah.
The house, the house is, is halfway, it's like.
Cause that's basically a private road. Partridge Lane or Partridge Place, maybe it should be Partridge Place.
Alliteration.
Right, because a lane would indicate a town road.
Right.
And a place would indicate a private road.
Really?
Because when I, when I plowed that, I, when I used to plow that, I had, I plowed. Into, I can't remember the people that lived down over the bank there. But I plowed that, you know, that's not maintained by the town, that's a private road, so we shouldn't call it. A lane, because a lane would indicate that it's a.
What, that's, that's, that line where I filled in there with the white is, is all tied together. It's.
Right, it's, it's, you could see it through the trees, because like I said, at one point Jimmy, I don't know if these are the two lots Jimmy Pro Carroll owned. And his daughter was gonna build there, but evidently she sold it, or they sold it, or whatever. Um, so if we called that. Partridge Lane Place, and that would be their number.
Well, we Partridge Place.
Partridge Place would be fine, and then they get a number, they get a number and.
So right now, the, the, the actual Crestway Drive, I guess technically extends to the driveway of one ninety eight.
Yeah, but that's gonna be a, that's going to be a.
Like, that's confusing already.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah, but you hear Crestway goes all the way up around, the turnaround's up at two sixty seven.
Right, that's the end of it, the dead ends up there.
Yep.
So.
That's the dead end of the road.
I would think we would be better off just calling that Partridge Place. Given that where the house is going to number.
I think it's a town right of way, though. I don't, I don't know.
Cause it, I don't think it shows up on the highway map, because we don't maintain it.
It's probably just a separate.
We don't maintain it, because it was just, it wasn't anything there. There's nothing to maintain.
It was.
But it's now, it's now dirt, it's dirt right now.
Right.
Well, yeah, it was logging road.
Um, and I don't know how they're gonna share the plowing and, and the maintenance and that.
I don't, I don't either.
Was it ever actually turned over to the town, or was it just divided, subdivided in a way like that?
Yeah, I think that's just a next, so.
Yeah.
I mean, that doesn't, that's, that's not even a class four road, that's a trail. If it was a town road, so. Um, and I think that Louis and the folks that own the house down over the bank. Are gonna have to figure out who's gonna do what for maintenance.
Yeah.
She's probably, you know, I, like, when I plowed that, it was always, I mean, they paid for me to plow from Crestway. Down around to the house, and where that makes that point, like Billy, I mean, that is a switchback.
Yep.
If you're not paying attention, you're over the bank, and then you gotta go get something really big to get yourself out, because you're stuck. And in Blizzard, it's hard to see up there, so anyhow. But if you wanna not have confusion, I would go with. Partridge Place. They're probably not gonna be real happy, but not the end of the world. And then, and if we did that right, when, if that other lot was sold and developed, because never say never.
Right, and that's, and that, that would.
That would have a lower number or.
And that was thinking about making the change now, because that way it doesn't, it doesn't matter down the road, it just, it just gets numbered and it's not.
So the one person with the actual house there.
Yes.
They're gonna get inconvenienced, but that would be the best clarification, because when you start going with Crestway and Crestway.
Yeah.
Whatever, I don't, that, that.
Yeah.
So.
It's like Sherwood Hill Extension, circle or wherever it is over there.
This is, this is one of those.
Kind of at the end, where this is, you know, if this was, if it was up. Where that last house is, and then there was a road off of that, then if it would, then Crestway, then I would do that, but because this is a. Separate road, we should have a separate name.
So this is one of those, we have to amend the ordinance, because we're adding, we're adding a town road name, regardless, writing a town road name, so this.
Even if it's a private.
Yeah, like we did, we did with Honeybee Place and stuff like that, like it's, it's a, it's a, it's adding a town road name, so it's an amendment to the ordinance, so. If we wanna do that, and that's, that's part of what I want to talk about tonight, so if we wanna do that, then I will work that up for the next meeting, because we gotta, we gotta do paperwork to.
Right, because I think what we should do is try to avoid the problems we keep running into. By heading this off at the pass.
Yep.
And saying, okay, there is a potential for at least one more, and there's nothing that says that. That acreage around that, this other fellow owns, at some point might get subdivided and be more houses up there.
Played out for it, so.
Cause one of the issues that prohibited development is here, is you could not drill a well. On these lots, you had to be part of the water system. That is now gone bye bye. So these folks can drill wells and they can do some different stuff up there, so.
Fill up their swimming pools.
Alright, so I will work up that paperwork.
Okay with, you know, I'm, I'm doing all the talking, I'd like to hear less of your talk.
You would need to decide on what you want it to be called, for sure.
I think Joey's.
Partridge Place.
Partridge Place, yeah.
That's what the original developer wanted.
Yeah.
Yeah, that's what the original, like I said, that was the original name. That was part of, uh. I think, um, Simon Johnson and other ones that built that with the guy that worked for C V.
Okay.
Yep.
Edson, Edson Johnson, they developed that. Yep. That used to be part of, that used to be the Creed firm. Part of the Creed.
Right.
Yep.
Wow.
Alright, so I will work up the paperwork for the next meeting and we'll get much shorter conversation.
Okay, and we'll try to make sure the numbering doesn't come back to bite us when they develop the rest of it.
Action needed B, action needed C Crowley Brothers Memorial Road Race.
That's the same as it usually is.
It is.
That we do whatever, prove except for.
Allow the use.
Yeah, I'm the use of Route three.
And they did.
Which is a state highway.
Yeah, and East, East Barker Road, I think.
Yeah.
They did give us their.
Been made, is there a second?
Second.
Motion's seconded, any further discussion? If not, all in favor of giving permission to the Crowley Brothers Memorial Road Race, please say aye. Aye. Anonymous motion carries.
Right, thank you. Uh, and, uh, next thing is, um. This is an agreement proposal from. Uh, Granicus, which is the vendor that, um, I talked to many. Uh, and this one was by far the best for everything. Uh, this is the vendor which would help us. Research short term rentals and then identify them in town. Um, the initial agreement is for three thousand dollars for one year, that's based upon the initial group they found. So it worked out to be a hundred dollars apiece. Uh, and if you look at the details, they update the activities every three to five days. And they give us reports. Um, my. Uh, my ask for this was, was to bring it to you now. Uh, I did get him to, um, give us a sixty day. Due date, um, for this, so we could. Uh, have it paid for with funds from next year's fiscal budget. Uh, because that's when we would get the income from the permit fees. Uh, but I would like to start, get them started on this, so we could get the initial list. And make sure the property owners are aware of, uh, we could proactively contact the property owners, make sure they're aware. Uh, so we don't run into any issues, uh, in January.
Okay, is there a motion?
Yeah, go to accept this, um, this contract, is that what it says?
Yeah.
Yes.
For short term rental.
There is.
Short term, yeah.
One to be drawn.
And authorized board chair to sign on behalf of the.
The last page.
Looky there, right, is there a second, motion seconded, um, discussion? Matt and I are each taking on the same continuing legal education course tomorrow on, ta-da, short term rentals.
I just did the one on current use.
I mean.
He was in that one, so.
Yeah. I gotta, I, they're, they're sending me. I missed it, but they're gonna send it to me, so I get to watch it. Okay, any further discussion on the contract for monitoring our short term rental? If not all in favor, please say aye. Aye? Anyone opposed?
Opposed.
Opposed. Okay, so three, two. And I'm gonna sign.
Cool.
Seven twenty four, okay, I think there's in there. Oh, you know, I just signed the wrong one, but hey, who cares?
Okay.
Okay, uh, that takes care of D. We have done E, which is the school board. Um, nailing out the vote ballots, um, board to meet an executive session, I don't have anything. Any other new items?
Well, it's not new, but the, um, we need to do something and this would go to transfers committee is the bathroom at the town. We've talked about it, Kurt's idea was to install like a septic tank up there and have it pumped. There's no place to put a field.
Um, yeah.
You know, I guess a recent, there was an issue, somebody looking to be hired and they weren't comfortable with. Not having a bathroom in the building. I think we need to move forward, I don't know what the next step, um, somebody like Robert Clark to go up and design something.
Yeah, I was gonna run it by an engineer just to see if, what we need for a permit or whatever.
It's like, it's almost like an outhouse.
It's a holding tank, so I don't know what you.
Right, I mean, the, Dell has taken what was the bathroom and made a nice little. Storage room with tools and all kinds of stuff. Um, I said, well, how are we gonna do this? I said, well. You know, just don't steal my wrenches when you're in here. I don't know, so, um, I do believe that there is a, uh. A hole through the concrete, what I don't know is if there's any water in that room. That would be something we'd have to, you'd have to figure some way to get water in, you know, the building's heated, that room's heated, so we shouldn't have a problem. Um, and then I don't know how they monitor, uh, tank like that, you know.
Yeah, it should be able to float with a wire monitor or something.
Something so that, you know, and then we would just have, um, hovers or somebody go up and pump it out when it needs it.
I mean, there's only two guys who's in it, so.
Well, but, but, so I will tell you right now, if there's a bathroom in there and the general public lives there, that's gonna get used a lot more new thing. But I do not believe that you could build that building today without a working bathroom in it.
Yeah.
I don't believe you could. You, you cannot ask any employee, even if they're there for three or four hours, to be in a building with no bathroom. So we need, we, you know. We've talked about it for a long time, so I think we should get something done, and maybe we could get something done before winter. I'm not sure where they're gonna locate the tank.
Yeah.
You know. It may have to be on, you know, come out, go to the edge of the driveway. One thing that really needs to be stressed. Is there's like two twenty inch water mains that run through that property, and we dug test holes right between them. Didn't get either one.[1669.26]